Okay Kelly, are you on?
Yep, feel free to get started.
Okay, I got 6:30, why don't we go ahead and call our regular November 10th board meeting to order. Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance if you would please. I'll start it off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you folks. Okay Crystal, can we get started with the roll call please?
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Jerome.
Here.
Trustee Kenny.
Present.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson.
Here.
Mayor Hammond.
Here. Does the board wish to make any amendments to the agenda tonight that we don't know of? Alright. Do we have any conflicts of interest that we need to be aware of this evening?
I do with the Sage Meadows second subdivision.
Okay, anyone else?
All abstained from the vote as well.
Okay, we have enough to vote? Yes, we do. Alright. Move on to item B, this community participation. It's time for public comment. Any individuals in the public that are wishing to speak on items that are not action items in this evening's agenda, you'll need to raise your hand in the box and once called upon, you'll state your name and address for the record and you'll be given three minutes. So, let's turn it over to the public at this time for other comment.
Mayor, we do have a few public comments.
Okay, you go ahead.
If you can unmute yourself please and state your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Kathy Y Dallas. I live at 3405 Revere Court in Wellington.
Okay Kathy.
Okay, I was told that there was a survey about some plans and stuff for Wellington and I went, I don't have Facebook, so I just was able to get on it through my phone. And like, you know, surveys will ask you two questions and then you'll just consider those two questions and as I was going through it, it was more and more, it just seemed very manipulative that I didn't, I didn't like any of the answers. And so, in fact, I didn't like the question. It was about, it was the one about Cleveland and Harrison and McKinley streets. And it seems to me that the survey was written, like, there's already been plans to turn these two residential streets into a, another business area of some sort. And nobody had ever asked about that and, and I just was wondering where this was coming from. There's so much other places to put, I mean, and also the questions were vague, like, you know, what civic buildings? And what did they mean by mid-rise things? And it was just very confusing and not, not real clear. And it just seemed like I was being channeled to answer the way, I wasn't being able to answer the way I wanted to, which were, why aren't we considering these other properties along the frontage roads out by the high school or on the east side of I-25? Why do we want to make Harrison and McKinley into another, into big Cleveland-type streets? I don't know who wants this. Most of the people I know who live here in Wellington, in fact, everybody that I've talked to that lives here in Wellington, likes it because it's a small town. And if we make a gigantic downtown, we're not going to be a small town anymore. So, I, and then not to mention, we just, you know, our water rates just went up. And, and where are we going to put all these new people? And I mean, how are we going to get water to them? We don't, you know, have the treatment plant that can handle it and we don't even have the water. So, I was a little distressed with the whole survey business. I, my, my opinion is that we leave old town alone. We put developments out on the frontage roads and the edge, more on the edge of town in vacant areas, not, no eminent domain where we take over people's houses. And, you know, if somebody in Wellington actually wants city life, Fort Collins isn't very far away. But I think, you know, I really would not like to change Wellington into Fort Collins Jr. I see I'm out of time, but thank you for listening.
Appreciate the comments Kathy, I'm not aware of the survey. I'll have to follow up on that, I don't know if you're referring to a future proposal of an expansion to-
Mayor Hammond, it's trustee Gator, that was a survey that was sent out in regards to the comprehensive plan. So that was sent out and it was posted on the town Facebook for sure, I think on website as well, but this last week.
Oh. Is there not an area in the, in the survey to actually post your own personal comments? You gotta, you gotta actually prove the answers that are given to you.
It was concerning, there was a comment box, but there was not an option to, like, none of the above, it was a similar concern that we heard with the water survey that we did earlier in the year where people felt like there was no option to say, I don't like any of the above options. So it was, you have option A or option B and then you could put comments in the box, but it wasn't very clear on that.
Trustee Gator, you think that's something we ought to circle back and kind of refine?
Absolutely, I've had, thank you Ms. Whitehouse for mentioning, bringing this up. I've had multiple citizens email me this last week in regards to that survey. And I actually am on the steering committee for the comprehensive plan. So this is something that I'll be passing those emails on to Mr. Bird and the staff. But that is concerning to me that it seems to me like we're missing the public's input because I, we seem to be pretty off base.
Okay. I'd like to visit with you some more about that trustee Gator. Let's, let's circle back on that one. I appreciate the comment, Ms. Whitehouse. And we'll follow up on that, you can rest assured.
Thank you.
And then we'll get a better, get a better approach. Because we're, no one's trying to change Wellington into Fort Collins Jr. at all.
That's good, thank you.
You bet, thank you, next comment.
Next we have CTAEI. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record please.
Hi there, this is Cam Teats, American Electrical Innovations.
Yes sir. Guys, so I'll just keep it short and sweet and blunt. You guys look around this town, there's a lot of businesses here that have been built, are being built for the last two years that aren't able to get up and running. I can point six out right now, just driving down a couple of the streets here. This doesn't happen in other communities. This happens nowhere that I've ever seen. You know, these guys are facing hurdles and all sorts of weird objections from the building department. Now, I know you guys got a new guy in there, you got Cody Bird in there, I don't know who gave him such a big stick, but he either needs some help or he needs to get taken down a peg and reined in a little bit. You know, you've got mass confusion, nobody, they can't tell you right off the bat what they want to issue a permit. You go, you do all your things that you're supposed to do, they come back with something new. They come back with something new. They come back with something new every time. You know, it's, it's not acceptable. And on top of it, you have multiple businesses that don't want to do anything with Wellington. We also have multiple businesses here that are being pushed out by the higher-ups here in Wellington. You know, you got a business downtown, he can't park his trucks in front of his building. Now you guys want to turn that into a restaurant, great, you should have done it the last five years. Now you got a business that wants to come into town and thrive and you guys are making it difficult for them. You got Ziggy's Coffee struggling, how long's O'Reilly's been sitting there on the corner not done? And you come up with any list of excuses, and I know Cody will, for why these things aren't happening. But the fact is, you don't see stallouts like this anywhere else. Six months, boom, a building's up, you're out of there. Nobody wants to do business with a town like that. So, that's really all I have to say about it. Thank you sir, I'll take it under advisement and I will visit with coding the planning department as well. I've spoken with you before on other issues and I know that there's a subject matter here that needs to be talked about. So, please don't think it is upon closed ears. Right, I appreciate your time. You bet, thank you. Thank you. We have anyone else?
We have Sheri Rodriguez, if you'd like to state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, I wasn't sure how to work this thing. My name is Sheri Rodriguez, I live at 8438 Second Street. So, I've been here for 24 years and I came across that survey also. And it was very vague, I did not feel comfortable answering any of the questions, I answered them, but I don't feel comfortable with any of those options. I don't think that people want that in this town. I don't want, I don't think people want to take away Main Street and develop it and take away people's houses and the couple of blocks next to Main Street. I don't think that's a good idea at all. I think what we need to do is give that old town a facelift, you know, kind of give it a facelift, but then we need to develop, develop a more modern downtown, either north or south of Wellington, where there's already not development, where you're not having to take away people's churches and people's homes. We need another exit off of I-25 anyways, so why not make another exit with a modern downtown road where all these businesses and whatever buildings you guys want to build down either south or north of us. I don't see Main Street or Cleveland, I don't see, no matter how you guys develop that, whether they do the Plan A or Plan B is what they called it, that will not be able to handle the traffic after that high school is open. We live on the corner of Cleveland and Second Street and every time we try to make a left-hand turn out of there, we almost get in an accident because you can't see anything. And that street there is not made for heavy traffic. So we need another exit with all of that modern development down south or north, like I said. And so those are my thoughts, but I am not comfortable with taking away people's houses and, and churches and just trying to make that modern, the modern development right here on Cleveland. It's not going to work. I think it's poor planning. So.
Well, thank you Sheri for reiterating that with Mrs. Whitehouse and I go poke my head into that as well. I don't think anybody's trying to take away any houses or any churches or anything like that. It's just long-range planning. The other exit and those sort of things and the longer range commercial planning is absolutely on a, on our minds. Just not something that we can go after immediately. And, but your thoughts are not far off from what this board is thinking at all. So, we'll circle back on that as well, trust, rest assured. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Next we have Rosemary, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record please.
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yes we can.
Okay, great, thank you. It's 8:34, West County Road 66E, I live in Waverly and I contribute to Wellington greatly. And so anyways, I wanted to do a little definition here. Trustee, to convey in confidence that he will apply it for the benefit of a third party or to some specified purpose, to place confidence in, to rely on, to depend on, to receive as to, and to entrust. I would conclude since all of you are on the board that you value your community and whether you're a longtime resident or newcomer, why did you choose to live in Wellington? Just like the other gal Kathy said, do you want to become a mini Fort Collins? Because why would you want to implement the failed policies of the places that people left? If you want to keep Wellington unique and affordable. Wellington is being presented with only the centralized planning viewpoint derived from the American Planning Association, which promotes sustainable development. The APA doctrine advocates for rack and stack high-density housing and is anti-vehicle. When was the last time city planner, I guess that's Cody Bird, advocated for personal property or individual rights? Because every board that is created moves government farther away from the residents of Wellington. And so before you move forward on any decision regarding the Wellington Comprehensive Plan, it is prudent that you step back, pause and search for more information. Many times staff will choose what information you receive and how it is presented, directing you into a decision on which you have not been adequately informed on both sides. Every, every new rule, regulation or mandate adopted in the name of sustainable development squeezes a little more freedom from every individual and a little more profit from every business. Any comprehensive plan being considered should be based on preserving private property rights and following constitutional principles, not international codes. I would like to see the trustees rip out this cancer that is permeating our comprehensive plans and it's called sustainable development. It is predetermined, government dictates. Fort Collins, Daryl Atterberry of Fort Collins, city manager, arrived in Fort Collins in the 90s. He transformed a beautiful, unique town to a regulated and controlled town to the point of banning backyard fire pits, telling property owners how to use, enjoy their property. If you have to use like, words like allow, permit, regulate, control, comply, prohibit, restrict zone ordinance mandate, then you are depriving one of his property in freedom. So I'd ask the trustees when they vote, please ask the question to yourself, does this give the people more liberty and flexibility or is it to control and regulate them? Go visit some of the older neighborhoods, I mean, we have a great one right there. Okay, am I done?
Well, you, I'll give you another 20 seconds if you don't mind, if you wrap it up.
Okay, well, I was going to say, there's a lot other information that you can get that is pre-marketed in regards to seeing another side of this. There's the Randall O'Toole, he considers an anti-planner. And then also there's, instead of hiring a planner too, I think that a private property council, which sole mission is to systematically and meaningfully evaluate and issue advisory recommendations on private property rights proposals. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Rosemary. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have John Richardson. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record please.
Hey guys, John Richardson, 6764 Mount Flora Street. And I just want to say, first of all, thank you to the board and the trustees and Mayor Hammond. You guys are willing to listen and, and that, that means the world. That you're willing to listen and take things into consideration, so thank you for that. I really just want to follow up to some degree on what Cam had started talking about earlier and say that I don't have any direct proposal for you guys here, but I think it needs to be made aware that we are in a place in Wellington where it seems like we're really struggling in terms of commercial businesses and commercial organizations working here. And the reason I say that is, our family, we're fairly new to Wellington, we moved here in 2015. And early on, 2015, 2016, people were really talking about, man, this place is really growing, it's expanding, there's so much growth that's happening here. If you want to start a business, this is like the prime opportunity to start a business. In the four, four or so years since then, we've had just a handful of businesses that have actually been able to get off the ground in Wellington and there has been a pretty extensive red tape for a lot of others that have tried to move forward. And so, I think, you know, I think it's wonderful that we have brochures telling people, hey, Wellington is open for business and Wellington wants to see these businesses come in. But along the same lines as Cam was saying, I think we need to really take a look at our process and figure out what is it that's, that's causing the delays? Why, why are things moving so slowly? And, and just my specific case, you know, we, I can't speak for the building owner, but we are leasing a facility from, from someone who built a business here in Wellington. And they, after trying for two years, obviously there was miscommunication on different sides, but after trying for two years, they essentially just gave up and said, we're never going to get this done. And that's why they leased us the facility. That, that seems to be a common thing that's playing out. And so I just want to get it on the table, get our minds wrapped around this and start looking at ways that we can move forward in a more healthy way for businesses. Thank you for your time guys.
Thank you Pastor Richardson. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Yes, we have Matt, I'm not sure the last name, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record please.
Yeah, I'm Matt Mullet, 4699 Clark Lake Drive, Wellington. Also have the Wellington Business Center. And I'm along with him, I'm very concerned about what we're doing with business, for businesses. I mean, it's been very complicated. Just, you know, I seen it going from way back when obviously quite a few other, lot of, lot of peoples changed over since this is, since I started in this, but still it's so hard, it's so impossible for a business to jump through all some of the hoops. And we try to bring businesses into town. So, the commercial end, I mean, yeah, there's concerns on the residential side, but I'm very concerned about the commercial end because we need some of these businesses, we need some of these restaurants, we need some of this, you know, these companies that are trying to make this work. And it's just, it's just not streamlined enough. And I know there's growth pains and I know there's things that we're through, but we can't keep killing the opportunities to have businesses thrive. And I know from experience how difficult it is to jump through all the hoops. I've done multiple building permits and, and the business center and things like that. So, I'm just very concerned, I don't think we're, we're not, the way things are going, it's not good. We need to, we need to figure out how to get this fixed. To submit a building permit, especially if it's a simple building permit, I get it when you submit something commercial and it's a little bit more complicated, but man, when you're talking about simple stuff, I mean, it needs to be a way to streamline it and it's not that complicated. I don't have too much more to say.
Thank you Matt, I got it written down. Anyone else?
We have Kristy Cannon, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record please.
Okay, hey, this is Kristy Cannon, address is 6886 Mead Street, Wellington, Colorado. Listen, I'm listening to some of the concerns that are being voiced, especially around this survey that just recently went out and just a process improvement recommendation. I don't know if you guys did a test pilot with a smaller group on the survey to get kind of the quality of the questions and was it able to kind of really dig out kind of the, the full comments from, from the public? It sounds like from listening to people that the surveys were written in a way where people felt like they were either directed to answer the questions in the correct way or they were not able to provide the feedback needed. So, was that a process that was followed with a smaller pilot to kind of test those questions before a bigger rollout? That might have helped.
One of the trustees that sits on this top committee, like, comment on that.
So, as far as I'm aware, I know there have been multiple rounds of surveys that have come out. To my knowledge, I'm not aware of a test for this specific survey that went out prior to this going out.
So there was a, was a committee that kind of reviewed the questions, but there wasn't a test with the public to kind of get feedback on, did that really get to the heart of the matter?
I do not know the answer to that, Mr. Bird may have a better answer. I know that the specific questions were not given out to the committee that the, oh my gosh, steering committee, thank you, that's what I'm looking for, that was going through that. So, when I took the survey, that was the first time I had also seen the questions and I had similar concerns to those that were voiced today.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting because the quality of the questions really does tease out in terms of like what people think and what they hear. And so, maybe there could have been a smaller group with a test getting feedback on the quality of the questions and was it really getting to the heart of what people were trying to, you know, answer? And it sounds like there might have been a little bit disconnect there in that process. So, just a suggestion moving forward to try to do something like this, it's going to go out to the whole community, try to, to, try to do it with a smaller group and try to get some quality feedback before you do a larger rollout. So, just a suggestion.
It's a good one, it's a real good one, probably need to rethink that one for sure, a focus group they might call that.
Right, or a task force.
Right. I thought we had a steering committee and other participants involved with that, doesn't sound like we really got-
We do. So, even though the, yeah, even though the specific questions weren't drafted and provided to the steering committee, we do have a steering committee that has members from the community. Trustee Gator and I sit on that committee as well as some other people from the community. So we do have an opportunity to talk about the topics and kind of go through a final process to kind of get the perspective of the people who are on the steering committee, but we can provide that feedback onto better ways to survey, sure, in the future. So thank you for that feedback.
Yeah, let's, let's circle back on that and see what's up with that here real soon because that was moving forward and then it sounds like we're hitting some roadblocks here. Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, we have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, appreciate all the comments, I got them written down. I promise you, I will be following up on all these.
So, Mayor Hammond, if I could quickly comment, I mean, I have multiple pages of comments here and a lot of these are pretty serious and very concerning to me. And I would request, I know we've got a lot going on today, and I know our work session this next week, but can we get a time that the board can sit down and start working some of these out? Because these are some pretty major issues, these are ongoing. And I, I think it's great, I'm glad you're going to follow up, but can we actually have this as a board discussion to make sure that we as a board and town staff are all on the same-
Sure, sure, sure. Absolutely, yeah, sure, absolutely. If this stuff is brewing, we don't want to let that happen, we need to be on it, you know? This is a lot of the stuff is, you know, that, some of this might be brewing, I was unaware of the, of the comp plan setback, but absolutely.
Okay, and I also just wanted to say thank you to the members of the community for sharing your concerns with us because we as elected officials cannot do our jobs if you are not sharing your concerns with us. And number two, this is something I wanted to bring up to the board and to the staff. There are people that did not speak here tonight that have raised concerns with me throughout this week and they specifically did not speak out because they were concerned that there would be pushback or people coming back on them or it was going to be harder for them to get things accomplished here. And I just want to say, one, I hope that the rest of the board would agree that that is not acceptable. But two, I want to make sure from the town staff standpoint that if we're getting negative feedback, that is never acceptable for us to come back to the citizens in a negative way because they aren't happy about the way that we're doing things. So I just want to make sure that is abundantly clear. And that's something I personally will not tolerate as an elected official.
Well, that's a great point, I don't think anybody's pushing back negatively here tonight, John, you know that. Well, let's, let's take it up, let's take that up and bring those comments and concerns because they sound like they have a congruent theme. Okay, alright. We'll come back to that shortly, not tonight, but shortly, in the future. We'll come back to that shortly, not tonight, but shortly in the future here. So if that's it, we'll move on to item C, which is our consent agenda tonight. And there are two items in there. There's a minutes from the 20, September 22nd, October 13th, October 27th, for trustees' minutes. And there's a resolution number 382020, ratifying a resolution referring to the voters, the initiated ordinance concerning retail marijuana sales tax in the town of Wellington. Is there any items in the consent agenda that need to be discussed here tonight?
Mayor, this is trustee Gator. I don't know if there are items, and I can ascend these adjustments to crystal. There were just a few misspellings.
Sure.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson's, the last name was misspelled on the top of page six under the water change vote. On the portion on page 11 in the fourth paragraph, my comments about not realizing that the town treasurer, it should say treasurer, it says town administrator cannot be dismissed without action of the board. That should have said treasurer. So there are two very different positions. So that was on, and I'll send these to the town clerk. And then on page 25, just says trustee Gator conformed that the town instead of confirmed, it was not trying to interfere with the process that was going to the voters. So I'll send those changes, but just those are minor, but I think they should be addressed.
A good catch, is there, trustee Gator, appreciate it. Anyone else? Other points?
This is trustee Whitehouse, can I make a comment? I mean, if there's typos in this, great, fix them. But can we not address this via an email? Or is it actually you have to take time during a meeting when there's 30 some, 48 people sitting here? That's all.
Well, no, the points, he's just going to be free. No, we're not going to go through the agenda and find them all. He's going to point them out, send them in, I'm good with that. But the points taken are minor. There's a couple of big ones in there, but that's okay. He's going to, trustee Gator is going to send them in, I'm good with that. But are there any real issues that need to be dealt with? Okay, if there aren't, no, can I get a motion to approve two items and the items in the consent agendas?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. All right, that takes us to our action items. Tonight on item D1, this is an ordinance number 17-2020. That's an ordinance approving the final plat and red zone to the PUD for Sage Meadows, second subdivision. As a presentation, Cody Bird, are you with us tonight?
I am. Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You got an echo, though.
Great, thank you.
Hey, Cody, you do have an echo. I don't know if there's multiple speakers in your room by chance?
Yes, thank you. I had to double up in case my computer technology here, if I lose audio, which I have in the past, I've got my cell phone to back it up, so we'll be ready. Thanks for your patience, Cody Bird, planning director. This first item on the agenda on your action item list is a request for a final plat approval and a rezone to a planned unit development. This is for approximately 36 acres east of Highway 1 between Jefferson Avenue and GW Bush Avenue. This is a public hearing process. And so I wanted to just real quickly remind the board for what our public hearing process looks like. I'll give a quick staff introduction. The applicant, Mr. Darren Roberson, is on the call tonight as well. If he could maybe be promoted to a speaking role here in just a moment, he'll have an opportunity to speak. Then the board can ask any general questions, clarifications, things regarding the presentation. And then we'll open the public hearing. Mayor will ask you to solicit public feedback, follow in public comments. We would close the public hearing and the applicant would be able to address any of those comments. Staff would make any closing comments. And then the board will have an opportunity to deliberate the proceedings. And then you could make a motion and a vote. Any questions on the public hearing procedure?
Not tonight.
Thank you very much. So I'll go ahead and kick it off with the staff report. This case, as I mentioned, is a final plat hearing and a rezone to a planning and development. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on November 2nd for this item. And following the Planning Commission's public hearing, they did vote to approve the final plat and the PUD. This approval by the planning, the recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission for this subdivision did include two larger commercial lots in the northwest corner, along highway.
We lost him.
Lost your audio, Cody. We can't hear you anymore.
We lost you.
I think he's trying to use his phone, but it's.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Perfect, all right, glad we have backup. Can someone please inform me where you stopped hearing my presentation?
You got past the public hearing.
Okay, so we got the public hearing procedures. All right, my apologies for the disconnect. So as I mentioned a minute ago, this is a public hearing. The Planning Commission also conducted a public hearing on November 2nd. Following the Planning Commission's hearing, the Planning Commission recommended to approve the final plat and the rezone to planned unit development. As part of that approval, the recommendation included two larger lots at the northwest corner of the property along Highway 1. That's to facilitate commercial development, including potential civic or public uses. And that would be providing a transition from the property north of there, which is anticipated to be a commercial corridor along Highway 1. So the larger lots in this subdivision would allow for kind of a step down from a more intense commercial development to smaller scale commercial down to, there's some smaller lots proposed for attached single-family dwelling units, which would provide a buffer between the commercial and the single-family detached units, which would make up the balance of the subdivision. Plats included in your agenda packet, and we could pull it up here if we need to reference it. We also, as part of the recommendation, this is really a continuation of the Sage Meadows subdivision that's already underway and under construction. Streets and sidewalks all interconnected to the existing subdivision. And this proposed plat would also facilitate commercial access off of Highway 1 to serve the two commercial lots as well as lay the groundwork for commercial access to the property further north. As part of this process, we also took this plat request to the Parks Advisory Board for comments and recommendation. And following the meeting with the Parks Advisory Board, the Park Board did also recommend approval of the plat. They accepted the open space layout and trail connections. They were encouraged by the connections of the trails to Viewpoint Park, which would serve as the park and recreational amenities for this subdivision. And the Parks Advisory Board also recommended that the town accept cash in lieu of land dedication for parks for this particular subdivision, instead of requiring a whole other park be constructed within this 36 acres. In other words, they encouraged the use of Viewpoint Park. And they requested the board look at how we could make some improvements in Viewpoint Park to accommodate the additional users from the subdivision. So following those recommendations from the Planning Commission and Parks Advisory Board and staff to support the development proposal as well, there's a few minor corrections that are kind of cleanup items that were identified in the Planning Commission packet. Because the Planning Commission just heard this on November 2nd, there hasn't been adequate time for the applicant to make all those corrections and get it in your agenda packet. So we submitted it as it was presented to the Planning Commission and the applicant. We're working on making those cleanups and corrections. We'll also be bringing a development agreement for this particular subdivision back to the board at a future date for future action to allow the developer to proceed. That's the high level staff introduction. I'd like to give Mr. Darren Roberson an opportunity to share anything regarding this request that I might have missed. And then, of course, I'll stand for any questions from the board.
Thank you, Cody. Mr. Roberson?
Can you guys hear us?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm here with Tom Dugan tonight. Usually Tom would run this through for me, but we're excited to hopefully wrap this project up and really appreciate all the help that Cody has had for input on it, on trying to buffer from the residential to the commercial. And I think by buffered with some fourplexes that are still single-family attached houses, it gives it a good buffer so that you guys can bring some commercial on, but yet protects all the single-family residential. Tom, any other?
Yeah, no, I think the buffer with the fourplex single family is a good one between the commercial and the single-family detached.
But yeah, and we're open for any comments that the board might have for us, too.
Board members, have any comments on this plat?
Peter, I did have a question in regards to the, my understanding from reading through the packet is the inclusion of those fourplexes or multi-unit housing, or I don't know this particular name, came from the town? And I guess it was a little concerning to me because I know one of the things that I thought would come out is we're trying to avoid going into these higher density or a lot of multi-density. And so the question I had was why are we pushing it? Or was this something that the developer was wanting to do? Or is this something that we as the town were saying, hey, we think this needs to be in there?
Yeah, so this is Cody Bird, planning director. And I can start to answer that question for you, trustee Gator. It's a fairly typical practice to transition from higher intense uses like commercial and highway commercial back down to your single-family detached dwellings. And so what we'd actually propose as part of this development proposal, and I've shared my screen here so you can see what we're referring to. But what we proposed was these larger lots of the single-family detached dwellings. And these two, these are the two commercial lots along Highway 1. So what you're actually looking at is just a little bit narrower lot size here. These are, they're still individual lots. They will still have individual single-family dwelling units on them. But what they do is they create a little bit of a buffer between the commercial uses here and the single-family detached dwellings over here. So what this proposal might look like is fourplexes that are attached single-family units. When you look at the overall density of the site, it's actually about the same as what was originally proposed with the annexation in 2016. What we did was we asked the developer to carve out these commercial pieces here, about 10 acres, I'm sorry, about five acres, to facilitate the highway commercial development. And by doing that, they lost some of the lots that was part of their original proposal. And so we balanced it with this buffering that gets their lot counts back to what they had originally submitted to the town to come out to about the same number of units with the buffer and gain two significant commercial pieces along a future commercial corridor. So that's why we proposed to do it the way that we did. And we have to answer any further questions from a staff level. And then if the applicant has any other comments to make on that, this would be an opportunity to do so as well.
Cody, this is Darren Roberson again, but I actually emailed Cody a rendering of what we did in person on what we're kind of proposing we built on these single-family attached lots. And maybe you can share that with everybody, Cody. But it's no different than we're trying to still hold the value of all the single-family homes. And even though we're doing fourplex units, single or attached unit, single family, they are still the same homes that we're actually building within the neighborhood, being our North Platter Gunnison models. So really, we didn't want to build a condo unit or anything that can maybe lower the values of the existing homes that we're building next to it. But yeah, give it a buffer from future multifamily, future commercial that we foresee going to the north there, along with these two tracks. And maybe Cody can share that rendering, what we kind of are thinking they will look like, which I think will blend well with the neighborhood.
And the screen share should be showing the proposed elevations for these units. If anyone can't see that, if you could let me know.
I don't see it.
Yeah.
Currently just still.
Let me try again, I'll see if I can get that up there.
Not that these will be exact, but it's just a rendering that we did in person.
Right, right, no, just an idea. Right.
Can you see the building renderings now?
Yes.
Great.
They were great units, so.
I really like this concept of offering diverse housing to Wellington. I think we're getting a lot of a similar price point for a lot of our newer neighborhoods. And I'd like to see that potentially we have more affordable options as well. So I think that that is a really cool thing that we're working on here.
We've probably had a dozen homes right now in Sage Meadows go over 500,000. This will also be able to bring us a better, a product in that still adds value at a lesser price.
I think that's fantastic. A lot more opportunity for folks as well. So I think it's a really good idea.
Any other board members want to comment? What you're looking at?
The overall, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I just was going to say when a motion is made, if you could just approve this, there were a couple, two or three tweaks that I know Cody had, we had, I don't believe they were substantive. This is Brad. If you can just approve this and substantially the form presented for the plat, we'll then go back and fix those. Trustee Kenny, you got something further to add?
Yeah, the other comment that I had was that I'm really, I've been following this process through the Planning Commission. As we heard this earlier, right, as we mentioned, we had a hearing earlier. But there is a lot of coordination that's happening on this kind of project, talking about the commercial areas and doing higher density in here, too. There's been a lot of effort made into making more consideration about how it affects Wellington, what's happening above and beyond in the next north along Highway 1. I think that there's been so much consideration done in this project and a little bit more creativity than we've seen in others throughout the town. And so I'm excited that we're going this direction so that we can, you know, really do more planning rather than just put in more neighborhoods, but make sure it contributes to more of a theme or vision for the town, or at least taking into consideration the neighboring areas. So I really appreciate this effort and liking what I'm seeing.
All right, other board members? Okay, a final comment. When I first saw this, I would echo the same as trustee Kenny did. I think, I think Mr. Roberson and our planning with Cody and everybody else really went the effort to try to consider all of the things that we've been talking about over the last two years that seem to get missed. And I really think this is a really great effort at that and encompassing everything. And it's a well-thought-out subdivision. I like the architecture as well and the multifamily. So if there's nothing else to say, I'd like to open up the public comment.
Mayor, we do have a public comment from Christine Gator. If you would like to state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes.
Christine Gator, 8132 Fourth Street. So at the Planning Commission, they gave a nice summary that talks about the town's comprehensive plan and community vision statements. And they say. And they say, which is not part of the board packet, but it was really good and it should be part of the board packet. But it says, quote, citizens want to ensure that new development does not overburden existing infrastructure and services and does not detract from the community's existing character. My concern, end quote, sorry. My concern is that 103 lots will increase our water usage and cause more strain on our water treatment which does not go with our community vision statement and our comprehensive plan. Perhaps a suggestion is to do more like a Wellington West homes with bigger lots. So there's less houses in this development, so it causes less stress on our water treatment plant. Another thing is the comprehensive master plan principle number 14 says that they want to enhance the community's existing small town atmosphere. Zoning section 16, one, 16 dash one dash 60, six, says, prevent the overcrowding of land, poor quality and development, waste and inefficiency in land use, danger and congestion in travel and transportation and any use or development that might be detrimental to the stability and livability of the town. So the comprehensive master plan is very vague, and it says small town atmosphere. That can mean very different things to different people, but what I've heard from the board tonight is that you guys don't want it to be a Fort Collins Jr. And what I see with this site plan is Fort Collins Jr. I think we are a rural town, and what that means to me is low density, bigger lots like Wellington West, which results in less people to keep the town, the small town atmosphere, overcrowding of the land is high density. And I don't think the buffer is necessary because I live next to downtown and a lot of people live commercial, and that's not a problem for them. My grandmother, who lives in Los Angeles, California, behind her house is a commercial plaza. So she and she lives in a single family home. So I don't think the buffer is necessary, nor is it always done. So I just want to keep our town different and unique and that small town atmosphere, and I do not want to be a Fort Collins Jr. And I feel like this will lead us to that as well as put a strain on our water treatment plant. Thank you.
Any other comment for the public?
We have Wydell, if you would like to state your name and address for the record and unmute yourself, you will have three minutes.
Kathy Wydellis again, just because I'm still listening. My address is 3405 Revere Court, and my last name is W Y D A L L I S. I am concerned about the water. My just, you know, got the news that my water bill is going to be really going up quite a bit. We have, we're one of the nice, lucky people that have a pretty big yard. My HOA says I have to keep my yard green and I pay in the summertime, I pay $200 a month for my my water and sewer bill. And my husband, I didn't check his numbers. My husband did it, and he said, well, it's gonna be closer to $500 for us to to. So we're just going to make the HOA mad probably because we can't afford to to water the lawn. And then in the meantime, you know, there's new houses going up all the time and 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 now I've just found out that the treatment plant hasn't even been started. I mean, I used to go to all these meetings years ago, and the treatment plant was, you know, like in the works. And and it now it turns out it hasn't even started. So just as a resident, I'm really concerned that we get more development before we have the water for it. And, you know, I don't know, it just, that's just something that I'm thinking about. And I I agree with Christine that I I would prefer, you know, small towns or, you know, houses with yards. And you need water for that. And I understand the the whole wanting to build the fourplexes, but that starts, then that goes to apartment buildings and pretty soon, you know, you're Fort Collins. That's all.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else?
We have Rosemary. If you would unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I live in Waverly, and I've been dealing with this for the since the 90s when Fort Collins decided to turn into a controlled and regulated town. It was unique once, and they went down this sustainable development rack and stack high density, controlled and regulated plan. And that nobody wants to live there anymore. So it doesn't matter how much you think your property is worth now, eventually it will deteriorate because roofs do not equate to quality of life. And I would like to know, and it's most likely these developers very rarely live in these high density rack and stack mansions. They live off over there by the reservoir. So also Wellington was pushed into the intergovernmental agreement in the Box Elder Stormwater Project, which now everybody pays a fee. And I would hope to think that this the this board would really consider there again, does this give people more liberty and flexibility, or is it being more controlled and regulated? Wellington does not have any water of its own, so it has to acquire it somewhere else. According to sustainable development, they want people to live on 10 gallons a day. So growth has to pay its way. You guys are talking about the wastewater management over there. Growth has to pay its way. Why should Wellington West or some of these older housing areas have to pay and subsidize new developments? So you are exactly going down the road of Fort Collins, I mean Boulder, I mean California with all these plans because the planners direct and push developers to these high density housing developments. If you have bigger lots, you don't have to worry about getting a public park so that people who are crammed in these coffin apartments or these coffin homes to get out and go play. And we saw this with COVID-19. If people had their own reasonable sized lot, they have their own park in their backyard. Thank you.
Anyone else?
We have no other public comment at this time.
Okay, we're gonna bring it back to the board. Cody, you on?
Yes, I'm here, mayor.
All right, let's get back to our screen. Can you please clarify that all the lawns being watered in this subdivision are going to be done on non-potable systems?
Thank you, mayor. That's a great question. And the the property that's proposed for development does have access to a non-potable irrigation system. So all of the residential lots, as well as the two commercial lots and the open space, would have a non-potable irrigation system for outdoor watering.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
So I sorry, did somebody else have something?
Actually, this is Darren. Can I make a comment?
Sure.
We also probably most likely bring in 14 shares of North Pooter water for these 103 lots that we're proposing. So the water will be brought to the development.
Right, right, right. And development is paying its own way there. And 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 we are aware of our water treatment capacity and what we can deliver and what we can't deliver, though it's challenging right now. It is underway in the future here. Just had some hiccups and redesign changes, but I don't think that we're overextending ourselves. Okay. Trustee Gator.
So the question I had is I know that we're doing a non-pot for the external water, which I know is definitely the killer when we get to the summer. But what is the, I mean, one, what is the timeframe that we're looking at these homes being built? Because I know we're optimistically looking at 23 to 2024 before the water treatment plan is completed. What is the timeframe that we'd be looking at these homes going in? Because non-pot or not, the houses themselves are going to be using potable water.
What do you think? What's the forecast, Darren?
I think, you know, if we're lucky, we might move dirt, might have lots ready by summertime of 2021. I think Cody's looked at our our absorption and how many houses we build. We at Sage Homes find on keeping most of these lots and not not selling them off. If we do anything, we might bring in a couple of extra local builders so that we can keep that same feel. But I see most of the houses coming online. If we get lots, you know, summer of 2021, they really won't be even coming online till 2022, February, March. And, you know, you can't build all 100 of them right away. So I'd say it's about a 40 in 2022, and the remaining trickle in in 2023, just to build this subdivision out. And we went away with what we got. I've had multiple conversations with staff and I understand, I think, the situation. So we know we don't want to flood the market up there either until you guys have the capacity.
Yeah, and this is Cody Byrd, planning director. What I would add is that, you know, in relationship to the timeline, it takes a significant amount of time to get the infrastructure in the ground, to get these projects off the ground before we're actually issuing building permits. So the timeline that Mr. Roberson shared is is pretty respectful, I think, of of the town's current situation. The other thing that your staff takes a look at currently, as of as of last week, when I crunched the numbers, we'll, the town of Wellington only has 135 lots that are ready for development, that are permit ready lots. If you look at what that number means for the town, that's not much development over the course of the next couple of years. And so there is a need for the community to, if we're going to continue to invest in infrastructure, to keep costs down for residents, to make sustainable intentional growth decisions, we do need to have some additional lots ready to go. And so we're working on balancing the needs of the available lots today over what the town will need to see over the next couple of years to manage financial pressures, to manage our water demand and our water treatment plant improvements, as well as the quality of life for our residents and housing diversity. So we're truly trying to balance a lot of different concepts here. And this this current proposal is is one step in the the direction that staff has identified to help meet some of the town's goals and the strategic priorities of our board.
Anyone else? Okay. Now, being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the ordinance number 17 dash 2020, approving the final plat and red zone for the PU, the PU Day Sage Homes Meadows, second subdivision.
Mr. Mayor, just just a question. If I may have missed it, this is Cody Byrd. Did we officially close the public hearing?
Yeah. I gave it out to the public and took several comments.
I I'm sorry, did we close the public hearing?
Yeah, I brought it back to the board.
Okay, thank you. I just missed it.
Yes, sir. Yes. Public comment. It's over. We're going to motion to vote. And can we get that substantially the form? Say that again, Brad. What's the tale?
Get that approval of the plat and the PU and substantially the form submitted so we can make those changes.
Okay, and substantially the form submitted. Anyone want to take a stab at that?
This is trustee Whitehouse to make a motion that we approve the final plat and rezone of the PU D for Sage Meadows second subdivisions contingentive on, and it's what substantial form, allowing some minor changes to be made to agreements.
Second.
Let's take a roll call.
Trustee Gator.
No.
Trustee Jerome.
No.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
abstain.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson.
Abstain.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes.
We have three yes votes, two no's, and two abstains.
Okay. Let's move on. Item D2. Thank you very much, Mr. Roberson, for coming. Thank you, Cody, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Item D2 is a wastewater treatment plant expansion wastewater utility plan. This is something that we saw a presentation on. Dave?
Thank you. Good evening. This is Dave Meyer, staff engineer. The item before you is a state and federal requirement requirement known as a wastewater utility plan. This is for the town's wastewater treatment plant expansion. We are asking for approval to contract contract with Jacobs on this. And as you mentioned, Mayor, an update to the wastewater plant master plan was presented by Jacobs to the board on September 15th. At that time, this utility plan was mentioned as the next step in the plant's expansion. So with the plant's expansion and depending on whether or not the town uses an SRF loan for construction, there are a number of regulatory and funding requirements, and I summarized these on on table one, which I'll share on screen with you right now. One moment, please. Okay. So these are items that are required, regulatory requirements and funding requirements. I broke these down into regulatory requirements in the top rows here, and the bottom rows are the funding requirements for the wastewater treatment plan expansion. I also colored the items with respect to this color key below. So the blue items you're seeing here are part of the utility plan scope before you. You can see it includes, well, the actual wastewater utility plan, preliminary effluent limit or P E L application, that's a permit, and also pre-application meeting should we choose to go through an R S R F loan. I also mentioned, I'm not prepared here to discuss what all of these items entail, mainly because we'll be here all night. But this is just my intention here, which is to summarize to you on what's required for regulatory and funding steps. The gold items that you're looking at here are items that the town would have to take care of. These are the requests for qualifications, the RFQ for engineering, and the selection of that engineer and the actual applications for the SRF loan. I should mention that staff has already completed the RFQ process for the design engineer and has started negotiations with Jacobs on fees and scope, as Jacobs was indeed the top ranked firm among the qualification statements received. Staff will fill you in more, fill the board in more, and Mayor, on this during next week's work session. And lastly, these green items here, those are items that will be included in the design contract with our selected engineer, site application, process design report, environmental review, and so forth. So now back to the item at hand, the agenda item for the wastewater utility plan. So that entails these tasks that were outlined by by Jacobs in accordance with the North Front Range Water Quality Paneling Association. And those guys are are the approvals, approvers of this plan. And that's what respect to the Clear Clean Water Act, Section 2, requirements. So a contract draft that includes this Jacob's scope is included in your board package, and I've already sent that to the Brad for his prior approval. And finally, one last thing here in your agenda item is the anticipated schedule. We're still looking at for the wastewater plant expansion. We're still planning on presenting the engineering contract to the board. If everything falls into place. Um, if everything falls into place, uh, on this December eighth meeting. So in conclusion, uh, we're asking the board to approve the contract with Jacobs for the wastewater utility plan for a hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars. Uh, the Jacob staff is online with us right now and any of us would be happy to answer any questions you have. And Jacob's team, if you need to speak, please unmute yourself. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Would Jacobs like to add anything at this time?
Uh, this, go ahead, Kyle.
Uh, board and mayor, this is Kyle Snyder with Jacobs. Uh, I spoke with you last September or just two months ago, uh, when we gave an update on the wastewater plant. And as Dave mentioned, these are, these are the next steps in the process to get the funding, funding moving and get the regulatory steps, uh, moving in place as well.
Okay. How do you got anything to say?
Uh, now I'd just like to thank the board for their consideration of this. Uh, we certainly look forward to continuing to serve, uh, the, the, the town and, and work with the staff and appreciate all the, uh, help and assistance that we have gotten from staff, um, and to put this scope together.
Good enough. Okay. Uh, board members, would you like to comment on this particular issue here? Talk about this. Okay. Why don't we offer it up to the public at this time then?
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment from Christine Gator. If you would like to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Christine Gator, eighty-one thirty-two, Fourth Street. Um, I just noticed that you guys are using the North Front Range Water Quality Planning Associations and Wastewater Utility Plan Guidance Manual. And I was just wondering if we have to do this because of federal and state regulations. Is there maybe, um, a federal or state manual that has fewer regulations? Um, you know, mi- minimum regulations that we can use, just like my car insurance, I can choose the state minimum or I can choose more liability. Um, so that's just one question. And then the other one is, um, so, uh, just wondering if we could do something for, for less, um, less restrictions and get it done faster. Um, and then the second item is I noticed that in, uh, task six, it talks about environmental issues and alternatives to go green and things like that. And, um, and I'm just concerned because, um, if, if you're just researching to give the board options, normally going green is, um, uh, less effective and costs a whole lot more. Um, so hopefully that's not the direct direction that we're going, but it's just, um, if, you know, I have no problem, um, looking at all our options before we decide, but I just don't want that to be the way that we go. And I don't want, um, environmental issues to be considered before private property or residents are considered. I don't want it to restrict, restrict residents in any way because of environmental issues. I just don't want it to hurt the people of our town. Um, so that's it. Thank you very much.
Dave, can you speak to some of those questions?
Yeah, I could speak to a couple of them here and then I might, uh, bring the mic over to, uh, to the Jacob staff to answer some of the scope questions on the environmental stuff. But the short answer to your question is that, uh, yes, these are state and federal, uh, regulatory requirements that we have to go through, uh, for the expansion of the, of this plant. And that's all part of the Clean Water Act that was passed in nineteen seventy-two. And, um, the North Front Range Water Quality Planning Associations are the keepers of, uh, or the watchdogs, if you will, of, uh, of this wastewater utility plan. They will be approving it, reviewing it and approving it. The only thing I could offer that would, that could potentially, uh, ease the path a little bit in terms of funding and regulatory requirements. Um, and, and, and this is still subject to discussion with, with town staff and, uh, the finance people is, uh, we do not go through, uh, SRF funding on this. Then all of the, uh, all the requirements for funding, those, those go away. Most of them go away. Uh, and we, we still will be stuck, however, with the regulatory requirements, the site application, the process design report, and the utility plan, which is before you right now. Uh, Al or Kyle, can you speak a little bit, um, about the environmental things that, uh, was, that were brought up?
Sure, Dave. Um, so the, and just to comment a little further, the North Front Range Water Quality Planning Association is the local two oh eight board for all of Weld and Larimer counties. So anyone who has a wastewater plant, for example, that needs to be expanded, must go through that agency. They've been charged as the, uh, local board to make sure that everyone's in compliance with, with the Clean Water Act. Um, so they've put out a guidance document to, to guide through that process and what is required. And they do require that environmental considerations be made. So for example, making sure that, um, that you have the most efficient, uh, motors as possible, that use the least amount of power, which would be benefit to the town and to rate pairs. But, uh, not all those, not all those requirements are, are mandatory. And it will be up to the town to make decisions in those, in those regards in terms of the exact way that the, that the project will come together.
Okay. Thank you for your answers there. Thank you for the question, Mrs. Gator. Any other public comments?
We have no other public comments at this time.
Let's bring it back to the board. Close the public hearing. Board members, any final comments?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. We did have one hand raised at the last minute.
At the last minute. All right, let's hear it.
Oh, and now it's gone. So.
And it's gone for good. All right, we're back to the board now. Board members. Final comments on this. Okay. Can I get a motion to entertain the, uh, the contractor Jacobs to explain the water treatment plant wastewater utility plan?
So moved.
Second, okay. Oh, call.
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Jerome.
Yes.
Trusty Kenny.
Yes.
Trusty McDonald.
Yes.
Trusty Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Jacobs, for piping in there too. All right, we'll move on to D three. This is a town administrator employment agreement. This is going to be a presentation. Looks like Brad's going to talk to some of this. Brad?
Mr. Mayor, I'm here. Um, Mayor, um, employment agreement is in your packet. Um, I got a couple of comments that I'll probably change in a couple of places, but nothing else by way of cleanup. Um, the, my understanding is, is that the agreement follows the terms of what the board agreed, as you're aware, I wasn't at that meeting. Um, it is modeled after an agreement at the request of the town administrator. Proposed town administrator that, uh, it's modeled after an agreement that was done in Windsor. Um, I was fine with the form of that agreement. Uh, this will require the board to appoint the new town administrator and we would propose to get, get an appointment resolution at the next meeting. And so the agreement is, uh, going into effect is contingent upon that appointment. I assume that's, um, something the board is inclined to do. Um, that said, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to, um, rest those questions.
Okay, uh, before we do that, I believe that there was a request to, uh, just, um, from one of our trustees to, to, to have the board members, you know, comment, we, 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 we came up and offered uh, this, uh, this candidate, uh, the position. And I think the trustees wanted to, uh, take a little time to, uh, just give quick comment on why they thought this candidate was the best out of the candidates that we interviewed. And then maybe we can move on to some further detailed questions that are in this contract, that sort of thing. So with that being said, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, some board members for comments on, uh, what they thought and why they picked this candidate. Uh, why don't we start with you, trustee Gator?
Good thing. Thank you very much, Mayor Hammond. And so did want to share with you guys, as Mayor Hammond said, because I know the, because of personnel matter, these interviews happen in an executive session. But, uh, with Ms. Garcia, I think one of the things that really stood out to me, um, there, there were several things, but, uh, there are a couple of key things. There's one, she's got the experience here in Northern Colorado. She, she understands not only the issues that we face as a town, but she also understands all of the players at the county, the different municipalities that were around because she's dealt with those people. Um, she's got experience in other towns here in Northern Colorado. Um, she's acted as an interim town administrator. So she understands the things that are going to come to her. Uh, we, and I know one of the questions we had was really, you know, we've got a lot of challenges upcoming here in Wellington and she dealt with that head on. I also get a good feeling that she's going to be a good fit with the town staff. Um, I think that she'll have the good balance of making sure that we keep people on track and following the direction from the board, but at the same time, making sure that we're developing and helping our staff to grow as well. And then for me, just as a trustee, um, I felt that she'll be someone who's very good at connecting with the citizens and as well as listening when I have concerns that are brought to me. Cause that's one of the big things for me is communications that when concerns are brought to me and I can bring them to her, that she'll make sure that those are dealt with and then interacted with, and then she can engage with the public as well. So I really think that she'll do a fantastic job to deal with the issues that we've got going on, but to help us really get out the other side and do very strongly.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Whitehouse, would you like to talk about your experience with this candidate?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think it should be clear that the board sat for final interviews for a nine hour meeting a couple of weeks ago, interviewed the final four candidates. I mean, there were a hundred and seventy plus who applied, twelve winnowed down and four brought in for final in-person interviews. And again, I would reiterate some of the comments of, uh, trustee Gator as well. But again, based on our experience, uh, again, we came to consensus on this, which is pretty unusual because we do respectfully, uh, disagree. But I do believe she will have the skills, uh, to come and, and work effectively with us. I mean, I, I think that's, this position has been vacant for a while. I think she again, has local experience, local knowledge of the regional players. She understands water issues. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to, uh, having, uh, Ms. Garcia on board and, and moving along with, we got a, we're, we got a lot of work to do and I, I think she's a great candidate, uh, for this position. So I'm.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Trusty McDonald, do you care to weigh in on your experience with this process?
Um, well, I appreciate the experience to work with the board and I think this candidate has met the education, experience and qualifications that we were looking for. So, um, I appreciate all of the hard work that the staff put into, um, that day. It took a lot of work and I appreciate all the time that the trustees took to spend, um, doing the interview as well. So, thank you.
Trusty Knutson, Mayor Pro Tem Knutson, would you care to experience, uh, talk about your experience?
Yeah, I mean, out of all the interviews we had, um, she seemed to be the best fit for what we're looking for and she was up to the, uh, challenges that we face. So, um, look forward to getting her on board and, and, uh, letting nurse see what she can do.
Trusty Kenny, how about you?
Yes, I was super impressed with, um, Ms. Garcia. Um, some of the best things that you get from her right off the bat is that she's super present and engaged. She's very positive, yet very firm. Um, I think that she is, uh, resilient and is going to build some amazing relationships that will help Wellington, um, be as productive as possible. So that's my first, first sight. But other things that, um, Patty brings to Wellington is that so much experience and a lot of things that we would maybe consider in the future, or at least would learn from, including metro districts, uh, DDA, water conservation projects, um, police department forces, event venues. She has so much knowledge in so many places, um, that she can provide to Wellington so that we can understand if any of those things might be something that we're growing towards or not. Um, and if we were going to pursue those, that we could do that with the experience to back it. Um, in addition to that, as trustee Gator mentioned, she comes with a lot of connections from Northern Colorado, having worked in Windsor, Loveland, um, and more. So I welcome her with open arms. I'm very excited for her to get started. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, I too happen to be a part of the interview process with this candidate and, uh, I would just echo all the things that you have just said, uh, that she does know our struggles and challenges. She's been keeping up and she's been around long enough to understand what this town's facing. And she's not afraid of it. She's enthusiastic about it. Uh, she, uh, will mesh well with the staff. And, um, she'll be able to tell and understand and lead in some way, uh, us down a road of whether or not we're doing smart growth or not. And I think she'll help a lot in that area. And, uh, so I'm looking forward to, uh, working with her. Sooner, sooner the better. We've got to get moving. We've got a lot of things to do. Okay. Now, let's go to the details. I did mention trustee Jerome because he was working unable to make the candidate, uh, meeting on this one. So, uh, I hope I didn't pass you over, uh, trustee Jerome, just for that reason. Okay?
I wasn't there for in-person interviews, but I, I've, uh, got some feedback from other people. And I'm, I'm confident with the decision that this board is, has made to, um, extend a contract to Patty. Um, I'm actually really impressed that she's on the call right now. If I was out hunting, um, I would have just stayed out hunting and enjoyed myself and let the cards fall where they will. So thank you for, uh, coming, Patty. We appreciate it. Um, and I look forward to, um, the great things ahead that, that we're going to accomplish with our new town administrator.
Okay. So that, that being said, um, want to dive into this contract on any issues, board members? That we ought to stick out at you. Okay. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment.
We have one public comment from Christine Gator. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Christine Gator, eighty-one thirty-two, Fourth Street, um, number eight on the contract. Um, it talks about the annual conferences that she'll, um, will go to and then, and then some. Um, I was just, um, looking at it and I didn't see any rural community conferences since we have a unique community. Um, but I did see an international city, um, conference association, ICMA. And, um, that's a little concerning because international means the cookie cutter, one size fits all, um, way of managing a town. And that's definitely not our town. Our town is rural and unique and small. Um, and so I was just wondering, um, who, who put those in? Was it staff or was it, um, Mrs. Garcia? Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mrs. Gator. Uh, can we get a, uh, answer on that, Brad, or, or, or would, uh, would someone like to care how we got up, how we ended up with that paragraph?
You, you certainly can. Um, that's, I, I believe what you're talking about is the paragraph regarding, uh, paragraph eight regarding the, um, conferences she would go to. Um, those are, those are pretty much the standard conferences. ICMA is, uh, um, recognized as being, um, the reason you go to these conferences is largely to find out about, um, for example, legislation that's coming down the pike. Um, it's a keep up sort of a thing. Um, I would yes, that large or small, uh, most town administrators go to that conference. The, the municipal league conference is, uh, um, and, and the city county, and the county conference are, um, certainly the Colorado conferences were members of, of, uh, municipal league. Um, those are probably the standard conferences. I'm not aware of one for rural, although I'm sure they're out there and we can certainly encourage rural participation.
I think we'll be at a rural one for sure.
Yep. And, and there are rural conferences. I know that the municipal league offers.
Now, this stuff looks kind of standard to me. I remember seeing this before I, um, so, sort of thing. Okay. Any other public comment?
Yes, uh, we have Rosemary. That would, that would like to speak again. If you-
If you can state your name and address for the record, please, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, eight thirty-four West County Road sixty-six E Waverly. I'm very concerned about Wellington, that's why I'm here on this conference call. Because every single one of these, you say these are the standard conferences. Well, if you do not want to look like the generic sustainable development town, send her to all of these conferences. Because she's going to come back with the exact template that turned all these unique towns into rack and stack housing, high density, and multimodal anti-vehicle communities. Every single one of these, the annual conference of the international ICMA, City Management Association, the Mountain Plains West Coast Regional Summit, the annual conference. And all of these, I would like to see this town administrator go to some different conferences that promote private property. A, a bottom-up development rather than a centralized top-down. So if you want your town to turn into an asshole like Fort Collins.
A what? Excuse me?
Send her to these conferences. I would suggest, I would suggest that the town manager go to none of the listed conferences and not be a member of the Colorado Municipal League. These listed conferences are high-priced and expensive and they represent the municipality, not the residents. They push the centralized planning of sustainability, multimodal zoning codes that rip the soul out of unique towns. These conferences are anti-private property and they do not represent the people of their communities. The town administrator should be out talking to residents on what they want and learning what fits, fits them, not a template that they bring home from these conferences and, and learn how to enact creative mechanisms to increase residents' costs. So I would suggest that she go to like americanpolicy.org, look up Randall O'Toole, the anti-planner, the American Legislative Exchange Council, alec.org, a great freedom foundation think tank, Independence Institute, the Cato Institute. So those are some of many ones that will promote freedom, not control and regulation. So if you want your town to turn into Fort Collins, this is the exact template she will be bringing home to your small town, once small town, unique town, Wellington.
Thank you, Rosemary. I'm sure we're going to encourage our town administrator to do all those things. This is just a few. Uh, any other public comment?
We have one more public comment from Christie Cannon. If you can unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, please.
Hey everybody, it's Christie Cannon, six eighty-six Mead Street, Wellington, Colorado. Hey, I'm having some direct experience with some of these large conferences like ICMA and all the Colorado conferences. It's, it's bigger than maybe what you were just referencing to the previous commentary. There are development sessions for administrators to build skills to be more effective in those roles. They have regional networks, so they're able to kind of connect with other local leaders in the immediate like North Front Range. They are learning best practices to kind of bring back to their community. And they come back with a lot of really fresh ideas that they learn. So it's really a developmental opportunity. It's not really a, a kind of a boom dog or an expensive conference. I mean, these are the gold standards of what every town administrator or city manager attends across the United States or within the state of Colorado. So they are really, really high value and they are worth, they are worth in terms of the amount of knowledge and the implementation ideas that you get as a result of going to them. So, I mean, I've seen it firsthand. I'm a true believer in development and learning and best practices. And that's how, that's how your administrator will get stronger. And I just want to wish her the very best in her role. I was really pleased to see in the contract that you guys put in a six-month severance package for her. Because it's such a politically charged position where decisions can be made sometimes, not based off the skill or competency of the manager, but based on politics in the local community. And I think that was the fair thing to do, considering it's a standard practice within the nation in terms of how town administrators are handled. So I just wanted to add on to her comments and compliment the board on actually giving her a decent severance package. Although I'm sure you never want to do that because it's a politically charged position, these things happen.
Thank you, Christie. Anyone else?
We have no other public comment at this time.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board, close the public meeting. The board member doesn't have any final comments? Can we get a motion to approve the new town administrator's employment agreement?
I move that we approve the employment agreement with Ms. Patty Garcia as the town administrator for the town of Wellington.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Did you call me? I didn't hear you.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knudsen?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes, welcome to the team Patty. Okay, let's move on. Next item, D four, Chamber of Commerce funding request. Presentation, Christie Cannon.
Am I muted?
I hear you.
Okay, starting my video, want to share a screen with some, a few slides. Okay, so, welcome. I am Christie Cannon, I'm chairlect going into twenty twenty-one for the Wellington Area Chamber of Commerce. So I'm speaking behalf tonight on the chamber. Previous comments I made were as a private citizen, just from my own experience of working in the town with the, the role in the chamber as well as some of my involvement with my husband. So we are here tonight to talk a little bit about some things that we're looking at and requesting from, from the actual town of Wellington. So with that said, I would provide just an executive summary here in terms of the MOUs and the financial support requests that the chamber is asking for. So in summary, and I'll have detail behind this in a second, there's a sixty-eight hundred dollar extension of funds, educational funds granted previously out of a ten thousand dollar grant for advanced consulting services to existing local businesses in Wellington to help them really scale up to basically to larger operations, profits. And so we're asking for a continuation in terms of, of the MOU that's in place. And I'll talk a little bit about that in another minute. We're also asking for some assistance because the, the town canceled the MOU for the town for rental space. We're asking for an additional seven thousand fifteen dollars to help us with some of that transition. And then at the end of the day, the total request, the total asked between these two initiatives is a thirteen thousand dollar, eight, eight hundred fifteen dollars for the two requests. So that's a summary of everything that we are requesting tonight. And I'm going to give you a little bit more detail on that in a second. So I would start with the educational consulting services to help businesses. So this was created really at the beginning of twenty twenty, was a partnership with the town of Wellington with a ten thousand dollar grant. And we really want to make this clear, this was not a grant that was a check just written, you know, at, you know, at leisure in terms of just giving us the chamber a ten thousand dollar grant. We've had no money involvement in this entire interaction. We have really been the marketing machine, the marketing muscle to help local businesses be aware of these services. The services are provided through the Small Business Development Center out of Fort Collins. And it's really meant to work with organizations within Wellington that have at least two hundred thousand dollars in revenues or sales. The intent is really what they call, it's called scale up. It's meant to scale up organizations that have two hundred thousand dollars or more in revenues to take their business to the next level in terms of growth and be in prosperous. So the, the services that they offer are three different areas. So one is, and this is one that we have a lot of companies already take advantage of, it's sales and marketing strategy. So it's looking at what your direction is for your business, looking at your digital footprint, you know, how effective is your website? How effective are you drawing people in? They will do a direct competitor analysis to three competitors that the business selects to really give kind of a lay of the land in terms of what your organization is doing more effectively or less effectively than your direct competitors. The second is a financial check-in. So the financial check-in is for increased profits, improved cash flow, helping companies kind of step up in terms of how they could generate more revenues for their organization. And then the third consulting service is really meant for smaller or larger manufacturing companies that we have here in Wellington. And so they'll come on site, they'll do a very extensive review for like three days, the watch operations, they'll come back with some of the lean sig sigma, you know, recommendations in terms of how you can increase your profits, how you can improve your processes around manufacturing so that you're more successful. So it's, it's targeted at those three areas. And so what we've done as a chamber is we've really been responsible for marketing this. So we've contacted organizations within Wellington to talk with them about this educational consulting services that SBDC offers. And for groups that are interested in, in taking advantage of this to help their businesses grow and kind of move up to that next level. They would apply for this, they meet with SBDC and then the individual business owner pays a two hundred dollar fee for the service. And the town of Wellington pays eight hundred dollars for the service. So it's a total of a thousand dollars received by SBDC. Again, chamber has no involvement of the money, we don't touch it, we don't take them into funds, pay anybody else. It's all done through the town and directly with the business owner through SBDC. So that's kind of the, the concept. And SBDC is extremely well qualified to offer these services. They contract them out with experts out of different markets to really give, really give constructive feedback about what they've observed, areas they can improve on, recommendations for next actions. So, so we had an MOU signed with the town of Wellington. And I know we've got new board members, I don't know how many people know this. There was a MOU signed between the Wellington Area Chamber of Commerce with the town of Wellington, kind of outlining that process for twenty twenty. And so the funding that we were given for ten thousand dollars, you know, if you take ten thousand, you divide it by eight hundred dollars that the town is paying, we could provide this to roughly twelve hundred local businesses. Right now, we have four local businesses that are actively underway with the interview meetings with the consulting teams deployed from SBDC. So they're already in play and we are recruiting eight different organizations right now. We actually had some significant impact in terms of delays with COVID. Basically, everything from March on through about July, SBDC said, we're on hold. Everything we're focused on right now is COVID recovery, we're not offering these services right now. So when they restarted the services, then that was back in August, we put an aggressive campaign on, in place to start contacting organizations that we thought probably fit that bill of that two hundred thousand dollars in revenue, which is kind of the minimal, minimal qualifications for the services. So we're a little behind this year because of the COVID shutdown and we have funding left that was not used and we don't want to lose it. So we'd like to roll over the MOU that you've already signed with us, the dollars that you set aside, we'd like to take advantage of what's still unused to have a rollover into twenty twenty twenty-one. So that is, that's kind of the summary in terms of these consulting services. It was meant to help take local businesses and move them to the next level in terms of success. So, and leveraging existing resources that are extremely well-known with great reputations. The second request really involves the office relocation due to the early termination of our lease with the town. We had signed a lease, we moved in in March, we were asked in October to move out. So we had some incremental costs by making that, that change that was very much unexpected. So in, in essence, and I think it's really important to understand this because I know at one of the last meetings, there was a question asked like, well, how much rent has the, the chamber paid the town? And the answer was like, none to date. And it was kind of like drop the mic, right? So it was like, what? So here's, here's how it was structured. When we moved into the building in Harrison, the agreed upon rent that we would pay the town was two hundred dollars a month. At the same time, in the MOU, it talks about the fact that we would pay two hundred dollars in rent or we could offer like, like, like-minded, I don't know if I'm saying it right out of the MOU, but, but like services that we could offer. And so we talked with the town, because at the time, at that Harrison building, the economic development, which has not, it's not in existence anymore. But they were going to heavily use this really sophisticated printer that we use for a lot of our graphics design, a lot of our marketing materials. And so, so the agreement that was discussed was we would pay rent, two hundred dollars a month. And the town would pay the chamber, two hundred dollars a month for the use of the, of this, of this printer. And this printer cost is over twenty-five hundred dollars a year. It's a very, it's a very high-end quality printer. And so it was, instead of making the decision to, okay, let's write you a check every month for two hundred dollars to, to the town. And by the way, the town is going to send another check back to the chamber for two hundred dollars. The decision was made to do a reconciliation at the end of the year and kind of shore up where everything was. Because instead of just processing checks that were identical back and forth each month and made no sense. So we, in that building, we had free internet, there was furniture already in existence. So the total cost for us kind of being in that building at Harrison was one thousand two hundred thirty-eight dollars. And so when the MOU was discontinued for obviously business reasons that you needed as a town, the, we were forced to relocate back to another location. The rent is three hundred dollars a month, that's thirty-six hundred dollars a year. We are paying for a lot more of the printer. Actually, we've been blessed with the fact that Blue Pine's construction, which is in the same building, is actually helping out with a little over eight hundred dollars of that. So that, that printer again is around the twenty-four hundred dollar ballpark number. We now have internet phone service that we're paying for one thousand three hundred forty dollars. We had to go purchase furniture, it was an empty building, over twelve hundred dollars, had to have the phone installed, had to have the printer relocated and set up. And so the total cost in general for everything in terms of the move that we had to make came to eight thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars. And if you look at, let me make sure these views of the Zoom are not blocking the view. There was a difference of seven thousand fifteen dollars that we're now paying, that's incremental on top of the arrangement that we made when we made the decision to go to Harrison. So, you know, I think it's really, really, really important, because I don't think this came out at the one meeting, they were talking about the rent, is that it, there was a two hundred dollar check, we were writing the town for rent. And there was a two hundred dollar check coming back from the town for their use of the printer, because the anticipation by the town, especially with having Michelle Vance in there and all that economic development material she was making, the printer was going to be used primarily by the town. So that's why there hadn't been a check cut again, because it was kind of an offset and there was going to be a total reconciliation at the end of the year. Which, by the way, we could still provide, has not been done because we didn't expect the MOU to kind of end as quickly as, and as the way, and as it did in general. So that's, that's a summary of what we're asking for. It's not very common, obviously. This chamber has been very independent. We have not come asking for funds. We did come for the funds for the educational grant because we felt like it was a way to offer services to our local businesses that can take it to the next level to help businesses grow and prosper. And the town, and we've marketed that, that as a town-chamber collabora- collaboration in terms of the, the approach, along with professional services offered through SBDC at that time. So we felt, and we were also going to look at individual classes, we were going to do lunch and learn classes on various topics that would be of interest to local businesses. But with COVID, it just got shut down with having any kind of a live forum for, for classes. So all of our energy and effort has gone into the consulting. So all of our energy and effort has gone into the consulting services. But in essence, if you go back to, you know, what I shared in the beginning, this is summary-wise, it's a cost of, we're not asking for $10,000 more, we're just asking for what's left that we didn't get to spend in 2020 because of the shutdown on the services. And we're asking for $7,015 in relief for the incremental cost to be able to relocate the property to to another office. And it's a total of $13,815 for the two requests. So that's in essence what we're asking for, that is why we're asking for it. We'd be most appreciative, I think it's a good, good, good faith sign that that you do believe in the chamber and that there's a strong collaboration between the organizations. The cha- the town's been excellent supporting the chamber, they are a chairman circle sponsor. That has certainly been, you know, a great message to send, I think, this past year. The phenomenal work that we've done between working with the town, working with the chamber, and working with Main Street to have a strong collaborative environment, which is why we wanted to move into Harrison to begin with, was we wanted to have synergy between these three groups so that we did have more collaboration in general. So that is what, you know, we're putting out on the table. I did ask several people from the chamber to attend this meeting. Again, because of your format, I have absolutely no visibility as to who's on this meeting. I know there's 40 or 50 people, I don't know if there's one person off in the chamber or 20. That is an area I would hope, I mean, it's a side note, but I would hope that that would be reconsidered, that there is some visibility of who is actually attending meetings with or without a chat box. Because when you've got people you've invited to kind of contribute, you don't really know who's present. So with that, I guess what I would say is, just heading back to my last, my last slide. What questions do you have? What comments? I know that we probably do have some chamber meeting, chamber members on here or local businesses. I just, again, don't know exactly who's on.
Let me ask you something, Christie.
Yeah.
You want to get, let me ask you something, you want to give any potential chamber members a opportunity to speak?
I would, and I would like to read to you. The Sparge Brewery, Rich, who owns the Sparge Brewery, was not able to make it tonight, he wanted to attend. He has to, he has an event that he has to run at his brewery. But he, I did tell him I would read his comments, it says, "To whom may concern, I want to express my sincere gratitude to Mike O'Connell for their consulting services and the Wellington Area Chamber of Commerce and the SBDC Center for making this possible. Small businesses like myself are constantly looking for ways to improve our business processes. These critical services are key to ensuring we are on the right track and set up for success as we grow. I would never have been able to afford these type of services on my own. I cannot express how grateful I am for the town, the chamber, and the SD- SBDC for making it possible or for making it possible." So Sparge is one of the organizations of the four that is underway right now with these consulting services. Again, we have several others that are in play right now, and I would love, of course, I don't know who's on, love to hear from other chamber members that may be on or are board of directors of people that are on the call tonight.
Do you, you think when we go to the public comment, they can get on at that time?
That's a possibility, and leave that up to your discretion.
Okay, because I'd like to hear from others too that are getting benefit of some of this stuff. Absolutely. Well, let's, let's, let's go ahead and just talk about this with the board real quick. While we're here, I think it's pretty spelled out. One thing that enters my mind right off the bat is I would just assume that since we didn't spend the money that was put away for our businesses for educational help, whatever we didn't spend would just be rolled over into the next year. I don't know why we would want to retain that, that's, that's, that seems to be a pretty easy deal.
Yeah, that's just a continuation of the MOU that's in place, and just, it's just a carryover of the funds that weren't used. And that's only because we lost so much time with execution just because of the fact that we didn't have, we had COVID restrictions and they had to shut down all the services for several months.
Yeah, sure, 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 I know. Well, well, let me, let me, let me offer it up to the board here. They've had a chance to study these numbers and things like that, they're well versed with it. So board members, let's, let's comment on some of this, what do you think? What are your first reactions here? Anyone?
Hey, it's Rebecca. I had the honor of attending the annual meeting for the Chamber of Commerce just last week. And it was very refreshing to see, for one thing, the creativity and how they're holding events online. But that's also an indication of some of the services that in in the, they talked about the accomplishments from this last year. And regardless of extremely difficult situations through COVID, the chamber was one of the founding members of a task force that assisted businesses in surviving, finding resources, and just making it so far through COVID. It was nice to hear some of the stories about things that have happened this last year and how busy everybody's been, regardless of the fact that all the board members and those helping other businesses are also struggling with their own. So it, it was very nice to see that. And that was one example of many things that the Chamber of Commerce has been involved with that's created collaboration between the towns' programs with Main Streets and then them operating, of course, with a larger group of businesses throughout the entire town. They're a vital service to our community. They have so much potential to do even more. And I know that changing the MOU for their office space, of course, there was no mal-intent and situations changed. But regardless of all that, we need to understand that put them in a situation that they were not anticipating. So my hope is, again, with that good faith effort and to make sure that we all know that we're in it together and hoping for the success of the chamber, that we would be willing to help support them in these unexpected expenses as outlined in this, this is a very thorough presentation, by the way, thank you very much, Christie. But just such valuable partners, and I see their work paying off in the community. And I get that feedback consistently as the friendly faces of folks who will help you. So I just wanted to provide that feedback.
Are the board members, any comments on some of this request? Please weigh in.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Trustee McDonald, I think you came on first.
Thank you. I agree that the rollover is appropriate. Do you know, do we currently have an ex officio member of the town that serves on the chamber board?
I think you know the answer to that, and the answer is no.
Thank you. Would the chamber be willing to share a copy of their budget currently with the the town board?
I would have to talk with John and the board about that, that would be my call. We normally have that available for members, so I just can't talk to that. I know John's on the phone, so if he certainly wants to speak to that, I mean, that's not a common, common question or common request.
So is the town a, a member of the board of, of the chamber? Or are the, the town is a member of the chamber, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, that's correct.
No, but it wouldn't be unreasonable for the town to request a copy of the financials and the budget. And there should be no problem with the chamber turning that over for us to to look over, correct?
Well, trustee Jerome, real quickly, I just want to finish my comment, and then you, you can take over here.
Okay, I'm done.
I'm not opposed to reimbursing the $7,000. I just wanted to take a little closer look at that, that's a really large amount for a one-person office to move less than a mile. So I just wanted to take a little closer look at that information before approving that request. But I certainly, individually, my vote is supportive of rolling over the 6,000 just prior to the 7,000. I just wanted to have a little closer look at that. So if that's doable, then that's doable. But if the chamber is not willing to provide a, a member with a copy of the budget, I understand.
So the, the details that I just provided to you are not enough information or specifically, I mean, I hear what you're asking about for financials. I'll let John weigh on that, assuming he's on the call because I can't see that he is. But, you know, I, we've broken down the specifics in terms of the change in rent, how much more we're paying for the printer, you know, just some of the physical move that we had to make. You would expect, I mean, I, to be frank, a few months ago, I thought we might be looking at something closer to $20,000 for a move. So I was pleasantly surprised to see, you know, a, a small amount of $7,000 for impact.
Right, right. Other board members, other comments, and we're going to come back to all this.
Regarding the 7,000, I think that is broken down on one of these tables, can we go back to that?
Yeah, it sure was.
It, it's broken down, and it's in your packet, too.
Right, here it is.
But trustee Whitehouse was going to weigh in with a comment.
Yeah, yeah, in regards to rolling over the funding for the SBDC, I, I, I think that's a reasonable thing. And we've allocated the funding, whether it wasn't utilized in this year for some obvious reasons that I, I could see no reason in my personal perspective that I think we should continue that. Question about some of the other stuff, I don't know if there's CARES funds available for.
CARES fund's not available to the, our type of association or, it's not available, that we didn't apply for it. We did apply for gap funding, we were successful in receiving some funding for that because we have such a significant drop-off in our largest fundraising event for the year, which is our annual dinner, which normally produces $10,000 net for our, our fundraising. So gap is available to nonprofits like a chamber, and we did apply for some of that to help offset some of the fundraising. That has nothing to do with the actual physical cost of relocation, so. Good question.
But other trustees, trustee Gator, have anything to say?
Question, so I, I, for one, I agree with the rest of the board. I think the extension of the grant for the businesses is a great idea. I personally have dealt with businesses in a variety of ways for the last seven years. And it is very common with small businesses that they don't take the time to learn how to run the business. They're incredibly good at their craft, but they don't take time and they struggle with that. So I think that's great. The only question I had, which was why the bar is at 200,000? Is that a bar that we set, is that something that the SBDC set? Because I know a lot of our businesses in Wellington's fall, fall below that $200,000 bar.
So in for Collins, they use $300,000. Mike was able to work with us because we knew Wellington had smaller organizations to lower that to a $200,000 standard. And that's because, I guess, the best example I can give you, which when Mike told me this, it kind of made sense. He said, you know, we're really looking to work with organizations that are already at a certain level of success, and it's to take them to the next level. They do use a lot of professionals out of Boulder, out of universities to come do this work. And he said, you know, the best example I can give you, Christie, is, it's like, it's like going on a first date and talking about marriage. It's like, it's just, it's, you know, here, you, you know, the, the horse is front of the cart. It's really for organizations that have already gotten established. It's not for smaller companies that are, you know, making $30,000 a year, and they're just trying to kind of, you know, kind of get, get going. It's really meant for, and it's not meant for the Cameron's, I mean, the large, large corporations. It's really meant for, you know, those organizations like a Sparge, you know, for example, you know, that, that is doing well but wants to take their operations to a higher level. So it's meant to take organizations to, to that next level. And so that 200,000 was lowered specifically for Wellington with the criteria because they wanted to partner with us.
Okay, thank you for answering that question. So that's, that was my only concern with that, was just if we could bring it lower, but that, I appreciate that. So I think that piece is easy. And I know I, for one, said back when we had to end the MOU, I very much appreciate the work the chamber's done, and I'd be willing to see if we could help out with offsetting a few co- few months worth of the costs. The one concern that I have here is, and I appreciate the way you've broken it down, it's very clear, and I appreciate the presentation. It is basically the annualized cost of that, so I understand that. I do have a little bit of a concern because at the same time, I need to make sure that we're being wise with what we're doing with taxpayer dollars. So my initial thought process would be leading towards maybe we can cover half of that 7,000 number to bring a significant amount over. I do have a little bit of a concern about paying for the entire year, but I definitely agree that I think we, I'd like to partner with the chamber and see if we can make something work.
And that makes a lot of sense, John, I mean, I really respect your opinion. I think the, the, you know, it became, it was so unexpected for us. We never would have moved if we'd known we were going to be there such a short time period. We were really at risk of even not having another property to return to. And we thought, do we need to work out of someone's home? You know, it's kind of like how we started, working out of a garage. So, I mean, the, the costs are real for them, for this transition. And we wouldn't be faced with it if there hadn't been, and I know you guys had good business reasons for making that change, but we would not have, you know, had to move, you know, and, and so unexpectedly. It was such a shock, we really almost were at the point where we regretted even making the initial move because if we had known that it was going to be a short-term arrangement, it just, it, it ended up costing us funds to do that, so.
Mayor Pro Tem Canute.
So I'm fine with rolling over the, the grant money for that SBDC. I think we, we had it funded for it, it's a great program, and I don't have a problem doing that. I would like to look in a little bit closer on the reimbursement costs. We kind of canceled both the MOUs for Main Street and the chamber at the same time. Did we pay for any of the Main Streets?
I don't think so, I mean, I may not be the right person to ask, but you're also supplementing them with substantial funding every year. There's a little bit of a difference, like, we don't have any funding, we're not asking for support, you know, at a larger level from the town. These are just true kind of incremental costs. I think the $10,000 grant that we asked was probably the first time we'd asked for any kind of a support, and it was just because we felt very strongly that sustainability of local businesses and helping them grow in this area and really doing more than just membership of brand-new members, really trying to take existing businesses and help them be sustainable in our community. I think that was really the intent. And at the time, the town felt like that's a worthy cause of the chamber, not just to have ribbon, ribbon cuttings and after-hour networking and trying to drive for new members. But what are we doing for existing businesses to help them prosper and succeed? And so this concept kind of came from that. It's a little bit more of a retention, sustainability, growth strategy for kind of mid-level sized companies in Wellington.
Okay. I think maybe we should try to, you know, based on the comments of the board so far, maybe we should try to split these two instead of voting on both in one chunk.
Split them tonight or, or come back together on the other one?
Well, I, I think we all agree on item number two, so I think we can vote on that one. The second one we made table to look at some financials is trustee Jerome and McDonald that requested.
Sounds reasonable for right now. Christie, is that something you think we can do?
I, probably, could we hear from some of our members if they're present tonight?
Yes, I see, let's go ahead and hear from John Slotsky right now, he's on, I can see him.
Thank you. We, we have no problem sharing our budget with members or profit and loss and balance sheet, we've, we've done that before. I'm not sure, you know, the year's about over, so our budget's about done. Not sure if you're talking about a budget for next year or for the rest of this year. The one for 2021 is not complete. And we have P and Ls and, and balance sheets, just like any business. So we're happy to do that, if you could come by the office, we would be happy to share that with you. You know, I'm not sure how that would really impact your decision to help us with costs that we've incurred because of our move. But this is all your decision, and we'll do what we can to help you make it.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think anybody sitting here saying they want to deny everything, I don't think that's the intent. They just want to do the extra effort to make sure that, you know, they're doing their responsibilities and looking at things like this. And we're supposed to be transparent as well with everything, everybody go look at our budget, you know? I don't think there's anybody wanting to, like, Mayor Pro Tem said, we could roll over that, that, that funding that we've already authorized. I don't, I don't think that's a one to really dispute. And I do support the chamber, and I do recognize that that was a short-term MOU. And it was an unexpected move, I understand that. I mean, I'm sure you would never have done it, if you know, well, we'll just go over there for seven months, and then we'll try something different.
I would agree, we probably never would have.
Probably wouldn't have done it, so it didn't work out. So then there's some expenses incurred there, I, I don't think that you can deny that, so. But I do think that the board would like to take some time to dissect that a little bit and understand what that means, it sounds like to me. So if that's okay, and I think if I'm hearing the board right before we do anything, sounds like we can go ahead and vote on. And I think if I'm hearing the board right before we do anything, sounds like we can go ahead and vote on what is it, item two? And then table the other one and go do some further research on it, come back with something that, you know.
Is it possible to hear from a couple of other people that may?
Yes, yes. Uh, uh, before we go to the public with it. So, uh, Crystal, can you identify any other Chamber members? This is, this directly involved, directly involved the organization.
We have Nat that has raised their hand and would like to speak.
Okay.
You can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, yeah, this is Linda Knack and I am at, I live at 4214 White Deer Lane. And my family, we have our business, Knack of it Automotive at 3703 Cleveland Avenue. Um, I know you guys have a late night tonight, but it, it sounds like you guys have made your decision about the carrying over. And Lauren, I just want to say thank you. Uh, we have participated in this program with the Small Business Development Center and Mike O'Connell. And we have only gone through 50% of the program so far, but that 50% of the program has well exceeded my expectations as to what is being offered. Um, it just, it was a two-hour conference call with Mike and his professionals that he brought in uh, to help us really take that next step. We just celebrated three years at our place on Main Street. So, uh, excited about that and I would love to be an advocate for any future businesses that are in that criteria and encourage everyone to do that. Um, I will also say that we say the word collaboration over and over again. And, and at some point, I feel like it's getting a little dull as far as what that means. But that teamwork, that togetherness, that town, that unity, especially with, um, the town board and this project has been fantastic as well as um, Main Street going through COVID and being, um, on Main Street business, being a part of Main Street, being a part of the Chamber and all of the organizations. Um, I will say, and I'm going to encourage all these entities to try our best. Personal differences aside, to keep trying to support each organization without hurting our local businesses. So we really do appreciate everything that all of those organizations are bringing to us. We, we cherish our town and our business that we have here on Main Street.
Thank you, Linda. Crystal, anyone else?
We have Lisa Christopherson. If you would unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, uh, I'm Lisa Christopherson and I own Polish Spa in Wellington on 8136 Second Street. I've been out in the Wellington community for about two years, uh, owning this business. And I just want to say yay to everybody that's already spoke. That was, that's such, um, exactly what I wanted to say. I just wanted to add that how important it has been, especially this last year in COVID. The help, not just the town, uh, but Wellington's Chamber was so out, they went out of their way to make sure that I knew what I had available to me to make it through this, this year with the closed, closed of our, closed down and then also half, we've lost about 50% of our clientele due to COVID. And so, um, the, the fact that they would reach out to me further than anybody would expect, uh, um, you know, an organization to do, to make sure that I accessed everything I could. Uh, the timing was amazing. The Chamber reached out to me to tell me what I had available to me before. Um, I even heard about it from other business owners in, uh, Fort Collins. And I actually ha- even helped other people in Fort Collins say, hey, you need to look into this. I just received this information. And because of that timing, I was able to get in on some early, um, funding to help keep my employees paid. And they shut down some of that funding after a while. And so me being in there early because of the timing of you guys was just amazing. So I just wanted to say that was so helpful. So the need for the, the Chamber and, and the collaboration, as Linda talked about, is so, so valuable to me as a business owner, um, because it, it is what I want to do. This is even in the hard times of owning a small business and we do not know what the future holds. I am excited to go to work every day knowing that I have a community that cares about us as a business. And I'm able to do the mission and the calling that I have on my life there in Wellington. And so, so I just wanted to say thank you and I just, just love both the Chamber, the town. You guys have been amazing for me. Um, the last thing I wanted to mention is thank you for really pushing forward that, um, program. I have not accessed it yet. I am a tiny bit below that 200,000. So I'm gonna really look at my books and see if I can qualify because I would love to benefit from, um, that help that you guys are offering. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else, Crystal?
I see no other hands raised at this time.
We'll close the public comment, bring it back to the board. You know, back to, uh, trustee Gator's request. But it is kind of unfortunate that we can't get that threshold a little lower for some of the smaller businesses we got in our town, Christie. I don't know.
I talked to Mike about it and, um, it's so time intensive, the work they do with this consultant group. They meet several times with the business owners. They come back with competitive research. They come back with written reports, recommendations. It's really, and that's why he made the joke to me about, it's like going on a first date and talking about, you know, a marriage proposal. It's like, it's too soon for where some companies are, for where some small businesses are. So, um, that's kind of his logic to me. And.
Sure, sure.
I mean, I would love to have smaller too, right? So.
Maybe there's something else we can use other than that agency too, you know?
Yeah, no, I mean, they're already set up with it, so it was kind of easy just to tag into it. Um, but it's a good point.
All right, so we're back to the board. Okay, sounds like maybe we can entertain a motion to pass the, uh, the, the, the educational funding. Roll that over to the next year.
Do we really need to, uh, vote on anything? Isn't this all, uh, budget items for next year? That will go into our 2021 budget that we would approve at the end of the year?
Well, that's a good question. Can any, can Brad or somebody help me out with that?
Actually, that would probably be Judy's expertise.
Yes, that's right. I don't know who Judith is on tonight.
She was.
Hi, I'm here. I've, I've already documented the, the carry forward and I will get that inside of your budget. Um, and then as far as the separate piece of funding, um, I will just need direction from you. So I'll keep in touch with Kelly um, about how we're gonna address that. So right now, we're, uh, tentatively bringing the budget to you on December 8th. We do need to get that, um, into the state, but at the end of the year. And then we have some mill levy work we need to do. So we're working on all of those pieces. So the funding pieces, I've already, I'll get those in. Um, but regarding that, um, we'll, we'll get a placeholder in there. And I am also looking at some other possible places that we could get some money. So I'll send you an email on that.
Okay. Do we need to up, as trustee Gator, do we need to update the MOU in regards to the funding for the businesses or was that time-bound or was it just set in place?
It, it wasn't time-bound, but there are some things that are probably dated in it. It talks about economic development for the town, really mark, not marketing, but really kind of connecting to try to get the initiative. And of course, you don't have that position anymore. So the Chamber's taken on a very aggressive marketing, uh, where we've called businesses. We have it on our website. Um, but there is, it's a little dated in terms of that triangle of economic development. Uh, you know, in that role that we had at the time, the town, and then also the Chamber. So.
Right, right.
It'd be updated for sure.
Well, you got a, we got a new TA coming on too. So, right, I'm sure they're gonna circle and all that.
Yep.
So, uh, is my hearing that we don't have to vote on this tonight then? Is that what I'm hearing?
Again.
Brad?
Go ahead. Mr. Mayor, you're probably in a position that you could just put it in the budget. I, I heard a couple of comments that you may want to give some direction from the standpoint, i- it looks like Ms. Cannon and has, um, detailed what they have spent. I, I don't know whether or not the town wants to receive some kind of receipts or justification for those amounts beyond what you've gotten. And are these payments that then would be made in a lump sum or be made over the course of time?
They've been invoiced as they've come through your, your, your finance group. Um, so you have received documentation from SBDC and then the payments have been processed as services are rendered.
Okay, all right. So, and if that's, if, if Judy's all right with that, that's fine. Um, that's some way, it sounds like that part's gonna be set off and we'll take a look at it.
Kelly's aware of it too.
Okay. Okay, so we're not gonna vote on anything here. That's going into the budget. We're gonna circle back, get the information that we need from you for trustee members on the board, so we can review that. And then, and then circle back at one of our next meeting and in our budget process and to, to we can do. Is that, is that fair? Is that a fair statement?
Mayor, man, are you looking for a motion to table the item?
I don't, I don't, I, I don't know the, I don't know that we're motioning to do anything here. Uh, that's my question. Sounds to me like we handled it.
Well, we can take no action or we can bring it back for disposition at a later time.
Well, it sounds like we took some action with the rollover. Am I corrected hearing that?
It sounded like you agreed to that. I mean, I, I don't know if that's something.
Trying to get some instruction here. I'm a little bit, uh, on, uh, on, on proving ground here. Yeah.
Brad, it sounds like, it sounds like that the, you had a previous re- um, approval and that the board is fine with, with rolling them out over, um, for the, for, for the first component of the ask.
Yeah.
And that the second component of the ask will be handled within the budget. So I, I, I hear that Judy has put these, put the amended, has placed that, this in the budget and has recognized that it was already approved. So it doesn't sound like you need to take any action beyond the further budget approval at the budget ti- time. Is that a fair statement?
Brad, that's not my, my understanding is that they're asking for an additional $7,015 for moving expenses.
I understand that and I understand that's gonna go in the budget.
As a budgetary item also, I think, uh, trustee Knutson, because it's for next year, asking for help with their next year stuff, so we can look at it in the budgeting process for next year.
And what's the timeline of that again?
December, early December, December 7th. December 8th, I think we have to do the first pass that goes to the state. And then we always, uh, vote on the final budget at the end of the year.
And when does, uh, Kelly or, um, I'm sorry, Patty join officially?
December 1st.
So we could certainly meet with her to go through it too.
Does that, Greg, you wanna go? Trustee McDonald?
Trustee Jerome?
I think it goes in the budget.
Fine with that.
Yep.
To bring up is that not all these expenses are related to next years.
So, yeah, that's a good point. This is, this is kind of retro for, for impact for this year to a certain extent.
Yeah, cause some of these, the furniture, moving costs and then the rent for the remainder of the year are on this calendar year. I just wanted to bring that up. So for.
This is Jude again. Um, so when I said budget, let me clarify. I, I would like um, the opportunity to read some of the CARES funding. Um, and so my concern is $300 per month for a whole year. Um, I, I'm not sure I can substantiate that. I would like to send an, uh, email to the board after I have, I'd like to look at that language a little bit more. So I'd like to look at, um, break up the $7,015 that I have that in front of me, break up what I feel that we could, um, look at and use some of the CARES funding, um, which is a separate item. That would be in the 2000, so this current year, 2020. Um, the piece that I meant I would put in the budget is the carry forward. So there are two separate items. So I, I cannot speak to, um, I, without reading in that language, and I did review it before the meeting. But I, I do not feel that at this point, um, without some clarification reaching out to Dola that I can say that we could do the $3,600 all under the CARES funding. Um, and I realized that we needed space for some additional staff, et cetera, et cetera. It was before my time, some of those decisions that were made, but to say the whole $3,600, the whole year um, was COVID-related, I, I think we would be hard pressed to, um, to substantiate that if we were questioned.
I have a concern that this is COVID-related, but okay, it sounds like we need to obviously look into this further for the.
Yeah, it sounds like we can, we can roll over the, you know, the funding for the education. That's budgetary. We need to go back and get some information on the other requests, Christie. Okay, so we need to do that, move forward here.
And, uh, as this is trustee Whitehouse, I would suggest that however we would fund this, whether it came out of general funds, whether it cares the possibility, we would still need to pass a budget amendment because I don't think we have a, a line item that would.
Probably.
So that we would need that sort of legislation, uh, sorted out prior.
Maybe, that may very well be. That's what we gotta go find out.
Let, let's do this, this Brad. Why don't we just table this until the next meeting? And we'll give you some sense of where this is and Judy, you can like, make a look at it and we'll just get, maybe it's just a.
Maybe, maybe we close the gap a little bit, find out if there's other funds out there available that we can use.
Yep.
Does that make sense, Judy?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
I make a request, um, Judy, can you look into with the budget as you're doing the research? I know we have a, I believe, $10,000 set aside in a discretionary fund for the board. And can you just give us an idea of what that fund sits at right now? Not right now, but in the research that you do when this comes back to the board, if you could just have those numbers for us, because that might be a potential area that we could um, pull funding from, that's not gonna take from anything else.
Correct. And those were the notes I just made to look at anything and it might be more than one account. Um, look at potential funding that we have at this point in the year, um, that we could tap without doing an additional uh, budget appropriation or any kind of additional. So let me look and see what we have, what we've spent. Um, again, I want to read that language from Dola, um, on rent and see, um, just look, looking at some of that. So let me get some more information to you guys the next time.
Okay, good enough. So, uh, let's have a, uh, do, should we motion to table this until the next meeting or till we get our information all together?
Sounds like that makes sense.
Okay, so can I get a motion from one of our board members to table this item here until we can get further information?
Make a motion to table this item to our January 20, or sorry, November 24th meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Thank you, Christie, for the presentation, taking the time to do this. We'll get down to the bottom and see what help we can get you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. All right, let's move on to our next item, five wastewater treatment plant clarifiers, three and four relocating project, recoding project. Dave?
Right up your alley, mayor, right? Um, yeah, so this agenda item is for coating, uh, the miscellaneous metal uh, components on two of our clarifiers. There are four clarifiers at the wastewater treatment plant and two of them that were put in in 2015 roughly. Uh, needs their metal components, uh, recoded. Um, those are clarifier numbers three and four and, and a lot of these, uh, metal units are, are under the water. Um, peeling and flaking off. Uh, plant operators, uh, reached out to, uh, six different painting contractors and only two quotes were received. Um, we are, uh, uh, asking for authorization to execute contract with M and M tank coating, uh, for $70,000. They were the lowest qualified bidder. Uh, the painting, the things that we'll, we'll be painting include the center baffle structure, uh, supporting I-beams and catwalk steel, the influent pipe and portions of the scum beach. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll be helping to answer them.
Board members, you got any question for this man?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, do, uh, Mr. Mars, I'm looking at, it gives you a $70,000 bid, but it says exclusion. Are there anything? Are there any things like lead based paint or disposal costs that are not, that are anticipated to be additional to this amount requested?
No, we're not, no trustee, we're, we're not anticipating those items to be, to be a factor in this job.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
What was the final quote, sorry, did I cut somebody off?
Trustee Gator, go ahead.
Okay, um, so, Mr. Meyer, with the quote, I was a little confused, I know it looked like both quotes were seventy thousand dollars, but then I wasn't sure if there was an additional nine thousand on the second quote. Are they both quoting the exact same thing and it's just separate prices, or is there a reason that one was more qualified than the other?
No, they're both quoting the exact same things, it's just that what the nature on how they spelled out their quotes. So the maximum painting came in at seventy nine, I believe, and the M and M tank. Coating company came in at seventy thousand dollars for all doing the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, my, my read of that is they're charging for the catwalk and all that seems to be a, a secondary or a. Additive cost to the basic contract, so I think that's where the difference comes, if, if that's my correct read.
That's right.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Dave, when are you planning on doing this work?
Soon as we get some good weather back again. It depends, it's all temperature based, when we throw on these coatings, obviously, we need a period of decent weather, I'm not familiar with the coatings that they're using here.
Dave, I'm very familiar with all of them. Okay.
What, what is it?
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson brought up the most important point tonight.
Forty-five degrees, is that what it is?
You don't have, well, there's the next thing, they gotta sandblast it, and if they can't paint it that day, they're gonna leave it there, it's gonna rust.
Yeah.
Okay, the next thing is, if they excluded the heat, that's all on you. And they did exclude the heat.
Right.
So that's a rough one.
Right.
Bad time of year.
It's, it's gotta be tied with the weather, the weather forecast, you are correct. We're hoping we can get it done this year, but if the weather does not cooperate, we'll just have to punt in for next spring.
Well, yeah, is it good till next spring, the quote? Thirty days.
That's true.
Okay. Well, you can give it hell, see what happens.
The quote's good for thirty days, but what happens if you execute a contract? Once the contract's executed, the price is locked until they complete the work.
Right.
Yeah, but there's no. I don't know, guys, I think you're in a rough time of year. I'm painting out, it's a rough time of year, you're gonna be tenting that building.
Would it be? Miss, go on trustee Jerome. So I'm asking, cuz obviously you guys have a lot more experience with this, like, so two questions, one, it's sounding like it would just be better if we hold off on this until. We get to the spring, that's. Kind of what I'm seeing, and please weigh in Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, since you have more experience, but the second question is, Mr. Meyer. Can the clarifiers make it to spring without us doing this work, are we gonna run into major problems waiting?
They, they would probably make it to spring, the top coat has been peeling off on a number of these components, and we're down to a primer coat. Yes, to answer your question, yeah, I could probably wait till spring. The reason why we wanted to get in this year is because we had it budgeted for the twenty twenty C I P, and when we talked to the painters. You know, we had good weather at the time, and we were hoping that good weather would continue. Maybe in December we'll have a week or two of forty, fifty degree weather, we'll be able to knock this out, that's what our hope was.
Well, 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 let me, let me chime in here, if you don't mind, I, I, I do this for a living here, this exact thing, okay? And he's picked Tenebri, that's top of the line products, they probably are good for forty degrees, maybe thirty-five, I gotta go look at that tomorrow. And we do get times where we have a good week of fifties and sixties, you know, and, and they probably will. Sandblast and prime as they go, so it's not gonna sit there overnight, they got, that, that needs to be. Made aware of, it's gonna be a management thing, and I just, the only caveat I would have for you, David, is that. They're gonna throw the heat on you. Okay, they're gonna throw heat and weather protection on you, and that's gonna be, that's our problem, they're gonna throw that on you, that's all, and they'll paint when they can get to it. It's, that's how that's gonna work. It's unfortunate that we're at this time of year trying to do an exterior paint job like this, which is a high performance coating. That's a, that's a difficult one, you know, but hey, we do it all the time. I'm putting down traffic coatings outside right now, it's very difficult, but we're getting it, so. I don't have a problem going forward, it's just gonna be a management thing. Very much so.
Well, trustee Whitehouse, your question, I mean, obviously it sounds like its cure is based on heat, and you folks who have more experience. I mean, what do you think it would, what do you think in additional costs, if, again, sounds like doing it this year would be better? For the equipment, we could, sounds we could push it off, I mean, any ballpark of what it might cost to provide the appropriate. Heating conditions in this situation.
Oh God, they might have to tent it and put propane out, who knows?
Yeah, and the town, I don't believe we have that, that equipment to do these sorts of things.
No, it ain't gonna happen.
Yeah.
No, you're gonna have to wait for weather.
Ain't gonna happen, gotta wait for weather. And then it's gotta be dried out, cuz it's gonna be frosted and snow, so just cuz you got fifty degree day. It's a prob, it's a problem, it can be done.
We have one clarifier already drained and ready for this. They can get going on it as soon as the weather forecast. Will help with this.
Hey, I don't wanna manage the job, I just wanna prove it, you guys know what you're doing, you're the professionals, okay? They're just in your talk and pointing out, I'm not gonna manage this thing, you're gonna do it, so.
No, we, we won't let them put on these coatings or do any of the work if the weather doesn't.
They, they won't do it for you, they won't do it.
Sorry?
They won't do it.
Right, right.
Hey Dave, this is trustee Jerome, just to, to refresh my memory, the clarifiers of the big circular tanks that are mostly sunken into the ground? Very little of them is actually above ground?
That's correct, they're circular, they're giant settling tanks.
Okay, so in all actuality, most of those are underground, so if you were just able to tent the, the opening at the top and get a little heat in there, you'd probably. Be able to do something, I mean, that's probably inexpensive in comparison, but you know.
I'm sorry, I keep cutting you off there, trustee Jerome.
You're okay, don't, you're good.
Consider as a possible solution is we have concurrently, we're working on the. Rehabilitation to one of our clarifiers there, we do have hydro construction out there, they're gonna have tents and coverings for their concrete. I would imagine that they'd be happy to loan us any tents to get this covered.
Loan?
But yeah, we have a good relationship with them. And actually, I spoke with Preston, the project manager on this, and he did indicate that he'd help out whatever we need with on this painting stuff. Since he actually put in the clarifiers six years ago.
There you go.
Yeah, I, I think it's just gonna be a management thing for you guys, that's all. Anyone else got comments? No?
I'd just like to finalize that, I think again, we're asking some questions, but I think we're not operations, we're.
No, that's right.
I, I would suggest that we make it approval, I would approve this, if we can get it done this year, great, if, of the opinion of. The engineering department, it's not appropriate to pull the trigger on this this year, then they'll make the correct decision.
Yeah, 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 alright, let's go to the public with this. We got any public comment, Crystal?
It does not appear there's any public comment at this time.
We'll bring it back to the board, can I get a motion to approve the wastewater treatment plant clarifier number three and four recoding project?
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Good luck, Dave.
Thank you.
Alright, next on the agenda, proposed ordinance, item six, an ordinance concerning the regulation of retail marijuana sales in the town of Walaken, Brad. Turn your mic on, Brad.
My apologies, thank you, this ought to be pretty quick, this was sent over from the October thirteenth meeting, which you'll note in the minutes you approve tonight. It has been somewhat of a placeholder pending the outcome of two lawsuits that are still pending in the district court. We had told the board last meeting that we had had settlement discussions with proponents. We, I, I forwarded to them last week. Proposed possible refer, referred ordinance. That I indicated that I would be willing to recommend to the board, that they consider reviewing and referring. That ordinance would, or included some regulatory provisions which they had before, but cleaned those up. The proponents wrote back and indicated that. They'd had a chance, he did, this was from the attorney, had a chance to talk with his clients, felt it was a very good first step, appreciate the efforts and the town's willingness to engage. Went on and said they had a couple of concerns, and they asked that this be tabled until the meeting on the twenty fourth. We spoke and I told him I thought that was certainly doable, he ended his email by saying, again, my clients are appreciative of the good effort. Shown by the town, look forward to moving towards an agreeable outcome. At this point, I think we're waiting on them before I give the board what I've provided. I would suggest that this item be tabled and that there is not a need for an executive session tonight, but we would have that on the twenty fourth after we've heard back from them.
So, Brad, if I heard this right, there, you guys are going back and forth with language.
That's correct.
And, and it's still in the works?
Yep, what I will do is I'll try and send out to the board a memo of what I've changed, what, what changes I had, so you guys are familiar with it, I'll probably get that out tomorrow. And also I'll send you his note, the email he sent me, but they've asked that this be set off, and I think that probably makes sense for them to review what we've done.
Okay, so board members, you have any questions about this process right now?
Uh, yes, this is trustee Whitehouse, so. There's, without going into a lot of detail, there's two current. There's two municipal cases that are pending in court, would. If we were to come to some agreement with the proponents of this initiative, would those. Still need to make their way through the court, would those be dismissed, withdrawn, I guess I'm unclear about the relationship.
The concept, that's a good question, thank you, the concept trustee Whitehouse would be that. We would, that we would present the ordinance to you, the, the possible referred ordinance as opposed to an initiated ordinance. That you would send on to the voters, the board has the ability to do that, the board would not do that until such time as the, the. Two pending cases were dismissed, otherwise we'd have the same things we discussed at the last meeting, where we'd have possible conflicting. You know, a voter action taken on theirs and a voter's taking on the referral issue, and that, that would lead to some nightmarish results. So the, the intention would be that they would dismiss both lawsuits, and we would refer this alternate ordinance. Again, we got a ways to go to get there, but I think it, it looks promising.
Uh, thank you for your clarification, Mr. March.
Thank you for the question.
Anyone else? Okay, let's take it to the public, please.
Mr. Mayor, there's no hands raised at this time for public comment.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board, so Brad, what are we gonna do, are we motion to table this thing until such a time, or what?
Yes, sir, and then we wouldn't have the need for the executive session, we can say this until November seventh, I will then get the proposed changes we got out to the board.
Fair enough, can I get a motion to table the proposed ordinance concerning the regulation of retail marijuana medical sales in town of Walaken until the November seventh?
Our next meeting is November twenty fourth.
November twenty fourth, okay, sorry. Anyone?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Damn, I think you're muted.
Uh, the answer is yes, technical problems this side.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
And Mayor Hammond?
Yes, okay, item E, other boards, this is a liquor board, we're gonna enter our liquor board now, I got time is nine fifteen. To do that, I'll need a roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Here.
Trustee Jerome?
Here.
Trustee Kenny?
Present.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Here.
Mayor Hammond?
Here. Okay, this is the annual renewal for Avuncular Bob's Tea Bar Inn and Brew Pub, Crystal, it looks like you're gonna talk about it, anything special we ever need to know?
Um, no, so Avuncular Bob's Tea Bar Inn and Brew Pub Operations has submitted their annual renewal. For their hotel and restaurant liquor license, they are in good standing with the Secretary of State's office and are current with their sales tax. The Lurmer County Sheriff's Office has completed some routine checks of the establishment, and they have found no issues. There was a physical disturbance that was reported in January of two thousand nineteen. Which does not reflect on the liquor licensee. That disturbance was actually in the middle of the renewal for two thousand and nineteen, so I'm not sure if it's really relevant for this year. And that's really all I have to say about their renewal.
Okay, board members got questions about renewing this liquor license? Okay, doesn't look like it, for us, we gotta.
Mayor, I would have one.
Yeah?
I would have one thing, we may tweak this a tad, that they've got a DBA name on here, which is actually a second, second corporation that we may wanna check with them. Before we send it on, but the board ought to be aware that what we might do is take that DBA off, I think it's inappropriate, and there were reasons they did it, I don't think it should be on there.
Well, well, but does it prevent us from approving this, right?
It does not.
Okay.
I'm just giving you a heads up.
Okay, well, that's fine, those, those are just minor changes. Well, okay then, can I get a. Motion to approve the annual renewal for Avuncular Bob's Tea Bar Inn and Brew Pub, their liquor license?
So moved.
Take a second. Alright, roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yeah.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes, okay, we're gonna exit our liquor board. And renew our scheduled meeting that we were in with trustees, move on to our reports F, town attorney, anything special?
I do have one thing, Mr. Mayor, our stellar clerk points out, and I, and I think she is, she raised the question, and I did a little bit of looking. I do not believe that the Sage Platt was approved, I think if you look at the, I, I just looked as far as. Bob's Rules, which is your, where the board has adopted, but there were two abstentions, three i's and two nays. Those abstentions, according to Bob's Rules, count as nays.
Yeah, there were no votes.
They were no votes, and so you have, you have four to three, and that did not pass, just for the board's info.
Uh, where, Mr. March, where does this leave us then?
That leaves us at it being unpassed, it, it was not approved, and I, I put Cody on notice of that too. I suspect he will get ahold of Mr. Roberson. It could certainly be brought back on reconsideration by someone voting in the negative. At the next meeting.
Okay.
It's a point of information though, we have until the next meeting to act upon this. And if nothing, if, if we don't follow the course you've laid out, then is this effectively dead at this point in this process?
Yep. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that subdivision died tonight. So we can revisit that later. Okay, Town Administrator.
Nothing additional. Thank you.
Okay. Anything from any other staff members?
Mr. Mayor, I did want to check with the board. Our next meeting is on November 24th. That is the week of Thanksgiving. So I wanted to check and see if the board was comfortable beginning the meeting that night at 5:00 PM?
That's a little.
5:30 PM, a little bit earlier.
I, I'll have to get back to you.
The, I prefer we keep it at the normal time. It's already a stretch for me with work to get there. So if we can keep it the normal time, that would be better.
Certainly that's not Turkey Night, right?
It's getting close to it, but not quite.
Well, we'll see at that meeting. Okay. Board members have anything you want to talk about?
Well, I, I just liked the point of information. So if we, this is circling back to the Sage Meadow final plat. If the next meeting on the 24th, for whatever reason, is canceled, then would that whole annexation thing be dead? Cause we wouldn't have a chance to read this.
Be the next, it would be the next meeting following, the next regular meeting. And if that meeting were canceled, it would go to the following meeting.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Well.
And, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
So I had two items for the board. The first comes out of the CAC meeting and the CAC would like to consider doing a ceremony for the Christmas tree lighting. And they wanted to find out if that's something the board is willing to go through the process of working through, getting an, waiver's not the right word, but an exception for county from the health department, whether we want to go down that road or not, just they need to know. So if we're going, if they would like us, if you'd like the CAC to do that, they would like to do a Christmas tree lighting, but they wanted to get feedback from the board before they, you know, start the process of trying to get the health orders necessary to make that happen.
Well, well, sure. I mean, you know, I, I go to that thing every year. It's not that many people show up. It's pretty spread out. Do you even need a variance for that?
I can quickly interject if the board wouldn't mind. Um, I did have my regular weekly call with Tom Gonzalez and other municipal officials. I specifically asked this question about special events, as did other communities. We're curious about where we're at. The variance process is continuing to change. Their staff is working on it. It looks like it's going to continue to reduce down in numbers of what they're going to allow. And also they said they can't give, um, for an answer for certain whether these events will be approved just because they're expecting an uptick in cases after Thanksgiving, um, from that two week period. So we could be in a whole different state at that time. So if that provides a little bit more clarity, um, that was my, my goal, just letting you know a little bit more information.
Okay.
I don't see the harm in letting them try for the variance. I mean, that would.
Oh, yeah. Try for it. Sure. Absolutely. Absolutely try for it.
See what you can get. Then, you know, if we have to change maybe the area which the tree lighting, I mean, obviously it's always done at Library Park, but if that's not enough room, if it needs to be done out in a field, we could put a fake tree up and light it, you know, and get the same effect, I guess. So I'm okay with going for it, trying to see what we can do.
I just did a Halloween parade, 5,000 people.
Let's not be.
I was, I was there.
So that's perfect. So I will let the CAC know and then have them coordinate with town staff as necessary to get that ball rolling then.
Absolutely. Please do that. Absolutely. Thank you.
And the second item.
Quickly verify. Um, so is the expectation that town staff creates this variance? Or is the CAC will be working on this variance? I just worry about slightly about capacity for our team. We are in the middle of the budget season. So just wanted to clarify, um, who would be putting.
Let's have CAC do it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a problem asking the CAC to do the variance work if they want to put on the event. I think that's reasonable that they work through the process.
Yeah, we can help them, John. That's trustees.
Yep.
Okay. What else, board?
Last item I had, and we actually, um, it worked very well today. I was going to ask if we can just put together just a plan for when there is, um, public comment, especially in the non-agenda item related, um, issues. Just have a specific expectation. I think Mary handled it wonderfully today, um, interacting with each of the people that commented and letting them know that what we're going to do moving forward. And I think that was fantastic. Um, that just hasn't always happened in the past. So if we could maybe work out a plan of, okay, do we interact right away? Do we, but always making sure that the public knows what to expect. If they're going to bring something into the board's attention that they feel like it was addressed. Like I said, today I think went fantastically. Mary, you handled it very well. I just would like to maybe have a process that we know what that expectation is.
Well, well, absolutely. We can talk about that. And by the way, the reason why we had so much interaction is because we've had a lot of public comment tonight that we haven't had lately.
Yeah, that was great.
And those are important issues that they brought up. And, uh, quite frankly, I was blindsided by them. You know, I've blindsided a little bit there. So I guess that's my fault there. And I want to go back on some of that and circle back, find out what's going on. I didn't, I didn't read the survey. So that's, that's a, that's a blind sider. But yeah, absolutely. That's what we're about, right? Anyone else?
Yeah, I got, uh, just one thing. I, I'm sure everybody read the email from, uh, J.C. Cox. Uh, he was the chairman of the Parks Advisory Board. He resigned, um, after spending four years on that board. And I think the last couple of years as their chairman. I'm just going to read it just in case you guys didn't. Uh, good afternoon to all concerned. This is my final, my official resignation as the chair of the Parks Advisory Board. It has been an honor to serve Wellington over the past four years in its various capacities within the PAB. And I'm truly saddened that the path has led, uh, to this moment. I realize that change is part of the ideal of growth, ideal of growth, and I welcome change coming to Wellington. But some of the decisions made as of late, specifically in decision-making and channels of communication have left me disenchanted to place it mildly. I believe it may be best for me to remove myself and let the change perhaps come without my frustration clouding the benefit. I will be looking forward or looking for another avenue within Wellington to help the community. I truly wish you all the best moving forward with the PAB. This resignation stemmed from, um, the new process that is been implemented on taking applications and the, um, uh, interview process. And I, I, I'm kind of disenchanted with this process also. I know that it's a streamlining process and it's making it simplified, but I think, um, I can't speak for any other of the boards. Uh, John, I don't know if you've had, heard from the CAC about this or, or, uh, the Housing Authority or any of the other, uh, commissions or boards, but you know, these guys are volunteers, guys and gals are volunteers. And the people on the PAB, I can tell you take their job very seriously. And they felt as though they were, their voices did not matter any longer. Nobody really cared what they thought as the PAB. That's what their feelings were expressed to me. J.C. had contacted me and a few other members had contacted me when they learned that they were being excluded from the, interview process for potential new members. So I just wanted to bring that to light, um, that we've already lost one member of the PAB because of this, and he's a valued member with a lot of knowledge and how pushed through a lot of the initiatives of the last four years that, um, the PAB was able to get accomplished. So I think we really seriously need to take a look at this interviewing process for, uh, potential members going forward and not exclude the current members of these boards and commissions because they know best what person's going to fit in with the group and, and what the direction is of the, of the group. And, you know, who's going to fit in and, you know, that type of thing. You know, just like we get to interview our potential employees. It's kind of the same, but it's different, obviously. But, you know, these folks have to interact with these other members. And I think it would be at least, um, shows them a little bit of courtesy and respect to give them the opportunity to be part of that process, which currently they've been removed from. So that's my two cents. Um, I'm not asking for any, uh, clarifications or anything. I just want everybody to kind of think about it. And, you know, if this is the way, you know, we should go forward, then, you know, that's the way it should be. But, um, I think we're going to start seeing a little more disenchantment with our, our, especially the, the CAC and the PAB that, you know, seem to kind of get put on the back burner a lot of times because obviously the planning commission is a, a more high-profile commission and has a lot more visibility than, you know, these other boards and commissions. But I believe that every one of our boards and commissions are very important and they serve a very specific purpose. And so, you know, in order to get good quality membership, they need to know that, you know, once they're appointed to that position, that they're, um, going to be valued and respected, valued and respected going forward to, uh, execute what we've had, have tasked them to do. So that's all I've got on that.
Well, that's something we probably ought to think about, guys. Just think about that. I, I, John brought that to my attention when it first happened. I, I really did understand what was going on when it happened, but, uh, certainly don't want to, you know, disenfranchise anybody at all. I, I don't care if we go back to the way we were doing things. It mattered to me.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna weigh in on it a little bit because I got to participate in those, that first round of interviews that we did. And I know it's just a rotating schedule from all the trustees. It just happened to be in this first round. So, um, I, I understand the idea of streamlining it because I think we have different processes across every board and commission as to how people are assigned. And the problem is that there was confusion associated with that. Uh, something that was beneficial that happened, um, is that, for example, for the CAC, we did have the chair sit in on those interviews and participate, do the discussion and select the, and make the selections with us. So my hope is that this is a communication concern. And I definitely want to reach out to J.C. because I value his input so very much, um, in general. So I think that, um, I think we can work through this, but still accomplish, um, a consistency of applying and having a, a reliable method to put people onto boards and commissions. But I agree, there's definitely a room for improvement and obviously there's frustration. My hope is though that maybe we can recover J.C. because I know he's so very valuable and the PAB does such wonderful work. So, I'm really starting to hear that, that discouragement, but at the same time, um, I think, I think we can continue to do better. So I, I'm just going to challenge us to do that and we'll work through it. But it definitely was a huge task to arrange these interviews and everything. So at the same time, I don't want to put down the whole process because it was very well organized and took a lot of time and effort. Um, and then, you know, uh, Trustee Whitehouse and I spent a significant amount of time doing this. So it, it was a lot of effort put forth. So I don't want to discredit.
I, I completely understand the need for a streamlined process. And, you know, we've, I've, in the past two years that I've been on this board, it's always been kind of willy-nilly here and there. And, you know, and I, this isn't, I'm not criticizing you, Crystal, for what has transpired, but I just want to put it out there that we may need to make a tweak here or there to figure out how to, you know, include. And I know that, like Rebecca said, that the CAC chair was present. I don't know why if J.C. didn't get an email or what the, what happened there. And that's irrelevant at this point. I just want to point out that I think we need to figure out how we can engage the, the current members of these boards and commissions to be a part of the process. And I don't have the, the answer on how to make it work. That's going to make everybody happy. And there's probably nothing that can be done to make everybody happy. We know that we can't make everybody happy all the time. But I think there's got to be some type of happy medium in there somewhere where, um, we can, you know, involve the members, the current members of the, the boards and commissions to participate in this going forward. So, uh, once again, this isn't a criticism of the, of the new process. I'm in favor of streamlining it. It makes so much sense. But just need to tweak it a little bit to figure out how to, um, be more inclusive in it. And I'm not sure how that looks. And I'm up for anything. So, and I don't want to take up the rest of everybody's night, but I just wanted to point it out to everybody.
Yeah, I think communication is a big part. And, uh, again, I wasn't part of the interview processes, but I know that, uh, Mr. Bacon, who's the chair of the, uh, CAC was a part of those. And so he'd actually had the names and let people know on the CAC, um, who the candidates were that were, uh, being considered. And he actually had email communications even after our meeting, um, in regards to that. And while I think there was, it's an adjustment. And I did feel some of that where they would probably prefer to be a little more involved as a whole board. I think if we can maybe just clarify the communication to have it, ideally, I think the chair of the board to be in on those interviews. But as long as they're, because they can communicate with the members ahead of time and say, here, the people are considering. We have the applications. I was able to read through that. Um, and I, obviously as a trustee, but even before, as a trustee, I got it with the CAC. I got that, um, application for each of those members, was able to review those and people were able to give their feedback to Richard. So he could then take that into the, to the interview. So I think if we could try to make that work with the other boards as well, I think it will help to make that transition. But I agree, we need to have a unified, whatever the process is, we need to make sure it's the same across all of our different boards. So it's not creating confusion.
And if I can speak real quick, um, one of the reasons for kind of streamlining this process is to align with our municipal code. Um, it does state that the board and commission vacancies are appointed by the mayor and board of trustees. So including the board in that process. And there was an invite extended to the chairs of the CAC, PAB and Board of Adjustments to sit in on those interviews. Um, and there was also one, is a suggestion to have the staff liaison to those boards sit in on those interviews as well. So that's a tweak that we're going to make in the upcoming interviews. Um, you know, we have sent, after those interviews were conducted, those applications were sent to the staff liaisons, um, to make sure that those were a good fit and have them review those. But having those, the staff and chairs and board of trustees sit on those interviews and have a collaborative, um, effort, I think will be beneficial moving forward. And if there's any other suggestions or tweaks that the board or the boards and commissions have, please let me know and we can try and implement those as well.
Okay. No. Thanks for the clarification. And like, I just want to reiterate, Crystal, that I'm very appreciative of you taking the opportunity to streamline this and make it a, you know, a, a a process that has certain steps that are going to be done and everybody's going to follow the same steps. And that's great. It's never been done before. It's always been willy-nilly. So I, I'm very appreciative of that. And thank you for taking consideration, all the other stuff that was suggested and, and implementing that stuff. I would like to ask the board to, I don't know how we should do this, but respectfully decline J.C.'s resignation. And I will talk to him and try to convince him to remain on because I believe he's valuable, uh, person to be on that, um, that board. But I just wanted to kind of, before I even talked to him, I wanted to bring it up in amongst our group. And so we could talk about it and, and, you know, hash it out a little bit. And I, I feel comfortable with, um, what Crystal's told me going forward, we're going to be doing. And I think J.C. will actually be comfortable with it too, once we have a chance to talk about it and, and let him understand how it's going to work. And I think actually it'll be, uh, best for everybody. So, but if I could just, I don't know how you want to do it. Everybody maybe shake your head that we're going to respectfully decline his, his resignation and I'll, so that
Yeah, I get it.
I'll get him back. So.
Get him back. Uh, Trustee Jerome, I appreciate you, uh, reaching out. And, uh, again, the process may not have gone as smoothly and had unintended consequences, but I think, uh, if, if you would be willing to reach out to this individual, I, I would agree with your proposition here.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it. Anyone else? No. Okay, I got 9:40. Nobody else wants to do it? Have any more discussions? I'd like to motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call of favor.
Aye. Yay.
Aye.
Good night.
Night.